Get recording, are we? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Welcome, everyone. First, before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I do need to remind everyone that our maximum capacity is thirty-six people in this room. So, we are beyond that. So I'm gonna have to ask all of you that are standing, and if extra chairs were pulled, those need to be removed. And everyone can stand outside. If you're here to speak at the board meeting, and you haven't already submitted a form, you can do that, and we'll call you in during public input, if you would like to, if that's why you're here is for public input. We'll do our best to make sure that we can, that you guys can hear. I know out that door, some people can hear. You can stand in the front if you want, but unfortunately, we can't have more than thirty-six people in this room. So I do need to ask those that are standing to please exit the building and stand outside. You guys cannot stand there, you need to go outside. We can't have more than thirty-six people in the building. You guys can't stand it there in the hallway.
Are you talking about in the building or in the room?
We can't be in the room, and you, we can only have thirty-six people in the room, and the rest have to stand outside. That was from the fire marshal at the last meeting that we had that was overpopulated. Okay. The fire marshal said they can't stand in the hallways. They need to go outside. So can we do a chair count to make sure we're still in? Well, since there's only thirty-six in this room. There's more chairs than... I know.
Thirty-four, there's thirty-four chairs.
Okay. So there should only be twenty-eight, so we need to pull six chairs. Chairs, I mean, you all know how the chairs were set up, so...
It should be four rows of seven chairs.
Yeah.
Four rows of seven?
Yeah.
So I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay. Is there? Okay. We need to only have thirty-six people. Rebecca, would you mind doing a count again to make sure we're at thirty-six total?
Twenty-eight in the audience.
Twenty-eight in the audience.
My count is thirty-one. Out.
So we still need three people to leave? We can't begin until our capacity is not overcapacity.
So one person just walked out.
That'd be thirty?
We need two more.
We need two more people to please leave the building, the building.
Still four over.
We're four over?
Yeah, we're four thirty-two currently.
Now we're thirty-two. Okay.
Jason, do you want to sit right here? You can have a seat right here.
Anybody else out there who's speaking?
Krista, Stephen, you have my seat.
Okay, I'll go there.
Lisa.
Jason, where's your seat here?
I don't wanna take somebody else's seat.
No, I said it's okay. Sorry, Stephen.
If this is over, we would just need to count. Have to come in that way.
I know pretty much every, I've watched most of your meetings and pretty much those, like, two middle rows were in full.
So we're still at thirty. We need two people though.
They did. Well, we could, we could go into executive session and move over to the high school and do executive session.
We are set up to record.
And that's set to record. They're all ready to release their video. To have it, yeah, in a way with even... So are we now at capacity? Okay. Thank you. Great, if everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Give a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I'd like to remind everyone that these board meetings are business meetings held in public. They are not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title forty-seven, four, and Title thirty-three, Chapter five, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, which is IDAPA, and follows district policies. Would you like to make an announcement?
I would. I think there are probably some people here who are interested in the conversation that's happening about the SROs with the county on social media. And so I just want the community to know and understand that we are using levy dollars to fund our safety program. We didn't raise levy last year. It's the same amount as what it had been the year prior. However, our costs are rising, and we were notified that the county costs are going up another five percent. And so the board has asked that we open an armed guard position for Garwood, open armed guard positions. And we will see if we, if we get qualified candidates. And, but the decision hasn't been made. Right now, they're just examining all of their options, trying to be specifically conservative as we can be, recognizing that right now, our district is in a declining enrollment situation. And so it is imperative that we just press pause and take a look at that. So no decisions have been made, and we definitely appreciate and understand your passion, particularly at Garwood, for all that Deputy Klossen does, and I can't say enough about him. And so at this point, the board truly is just trying to do their due diligence and examine all options. Just wanted to put that out there, so we have some accurate information.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four, two oh six, one B.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. We need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bean?
Yes.
Trustee Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
And Trustee Jones?
Yes.
On that note, we are going to enter into executive session. We have a second boardroom, conference room. And instead of making everyone leave, we're just gonna head over into the other conference room to our executive portion of this meeting. So you all can stay seated, and we'll be done. Hi, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
I would move that we approve the absence for employee four, ten, twenty-four, as presented.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, before we move into the public input portion, I would like to remind everyone that the time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It's not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board, in its discretion, may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversations take place. All public input will be civil and respectful, address the board, not the audience, and address issues, not persons. Each person will have three minutes for input. Now, if there's a large number of individuals who wish to speak on the same issue or topic, a representative should be selected to speak on behalf of the group to summarize everyone's positions. You would be given ten minutes then. The audience shall refrain from applause, snickers, whispers, quiet comments, et cetera. If you're asked by a trustee to stop, you must stop. Disruptive and distracting behaviors interfere with due process, and you will be asked to leave the meeting. If repeated requests by trustees are disregarded, the meeting will be recessed or adjourned depending on the severity of the issue at hand. On that note, we will go into public input. I would like to note that the board has received several written comments, and so after the public speaks, we can take time to review them, okay? First person is Anita Dupsek. Is she here or...
Anita Dupsek, community member. Good evening, Chair Thompson, Superintendent Arnold, and trustees. I watched the April third, twenty-twenty-four special board meeting with dismay. Today's environment, unfortunately, encourages quick judgment when something happens without having reasonable conversations before accusations are made. I think the most unfortunate outcome of the swift call to judgment displayed at that, at this meeting will give the perception of division among this board, and that serves no one's best interest. There was a comment from a board member regarding the two fathers in this book, stating he had the same experience and that he had a father and a stepfather. A read of pages ninety-eight and ninety-nine makes clear that this is not the circumstance in the book. Again, we see the slippery slope of saying, oh, that's no big deal, until it is. We see the effects of no big deal all around us, and it is not serving children or families well. Our job is to set the stage for the next generation to succeed. This is a sacred duty, and we are failing that generation when we say, no big deal.
Thank you. We have Christine Corey.
Christine Corey, and I'm a parent, board trustee, district staff, and superintendent. I'm bringing my concerns about the recent talks of losing the Cootney County Sheriff's RSOs in the Lakeland School District, and I'm addressing specifically Deputy Klossen at Garwood. In twenty-twenty-three, the board was advised by the Commissioner's office that there would be an increase from sixty-five to seventy percent. Per the minutes of the board's meeting posted from June here is roughly what was said. Superintendent Lisa Arnold states we have the funds for the five percent increase. Chair Thompson discussed that it would be more cost-effective to hire armed district safety. And Vice Chair Grissom stated it would cost fourteen thousand, seven hundred more. The conversation goes further about discussing the options into February of this year. Here are the two main problems. One is that Lisa states upfront that the funds for the increase of five percent are available. Let's stop right there, the funds are available. I understand the board is trying to make cuts, but we don't start with safety. Furthermore, the levy has just been approved, and per the levy notes, the prior levy funding was two hundred and forty-nine thousand in school safety. With the new levy, it was increasing to three hundred and forty-one thousand. This information was used to help bring awareness and help get our levy passed. It was on a PDF, which I still have. That's a ninety-two thousand dollar increase from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four in school safety funds per the approved levy. Where is that ninety-two thousand additionally going that they can't afford to take a five percent increase on the SROs? Here's another reason why more and more people are voting no on levies. You tell them one thing, threaten them even with the idea, and then you say you need to make cuts? Same as a four-day school week. It's used as a threat if the levy doesn't pass. Now it's an option for the district to save money? You are losing the trust of the community, many whom have supported you. Just look at social media, hundreds of comments opposing losing Deputy Klossen or a five-day school week. These specific SROs are valuable and worth the extra money as they already have built rapport with the students. Their experience is unmatched to any outsider the district's gonna hire. These students trust the deputies and are even more likely to confide in them. The fact that the safety portion of the budget grew by ninety-two thousand and other areas of the budget had an increase that may have been unknown with the levy passed doesn't mean that we cut funding for qualified current staff and employees. And costs are not just salary. We have training, benefits, gear, and more. The sheriff's department covers these costs. At the end of the day, the only community this would hurt are students and secondary, the staff. If students are the district and the board's never been focused, then we need to make a decision that stands by that. The voters of this community, we keep our current SROs. Make negotiations if you want to, but listen to the community. At the end of the day, you cannot put a price on student safety. Thank you.
Have we done a body account of the persons in the audience? Are there twenty-eight?
I did.
Okay. Just, we have someone standing in the background, so...
I can't see.
We have thirty-two in here?
There's thirty-two in here.
Thirty-two? Unfortunately, four of you will need to step outside. We can only have thirty-six in here, and that includes our positions. We just need one more person. Thank you. The next person is Stephen Sap.
Hello. How are you doing tonight? My name is Stephen Sap. I'm an adult parent and an English teacher at TMS. I'm here to provide some context to one of the novels that I teach this on, that's being looked at. First, I'm gonna read you a one-star review. "I picked this up because I heard it advertised as the gospel, which translates to good news. It opens up by telling the reader how the human race is doomed because two poorly developed characters ate an apple that a snake told them to eat. I can't say I found much good news at all on this. I would not recommend this book to others. This is a review I found for the Bible, and it's used for effect, of course. But we must protect ourselves from sorting through negative reviews to tell us everything we need to know about a book. Regarding the book, it's Trevor Noah born a crime. I can tell that, like most things in life, we must be careful about the judgment we assign to things before knowing the entire story. This book is on my syllabus. I require parent signatures acknowledging class content. I've yet to have any, yet to have any parent complaints in my two years of teaching the book. The book is adapted for young readers, free of curse words, mentions of sex, pornography, or glorification of violence. Target audience is ten-to-thirteen-year-olds. This film has vibrant and engaging stories that keep young readers looking forward to reading days. I've had many students share that this is the first book they have ever enjoyed. Trevor, the main character, has a father who is white, while his mother is black. This was illegal under South Africa's apartheid government. Because of this, race is a core topic throughout the book. But just because race is a central topic does not mean it has CRT ties. Context is everything, and much work is done leading up to the book so that students understand apartheid and the setting of the story. I'm guided by Idaho Comprehension Standard five-B that states students must master the ability to explain how particular elements of stories and drama interact, including how setting shapes the characters or plot. I love this story not because students are using race to judge value or assign guilt, but because they gain a deep understanding of how the setting impacts the plot. In the novel, Trevor gets a shock to his conscience when reselling a stolen camera full of pictures of a family on vacation. Reflecting on this, he states, "If we could see one another's pain and empathize with one another, it would never be worth it to commit the crimes in the first place. This is a valuable lesson on how our negative actions affect people, even if we can't see it. Trevor is not perfect, but he owns his errors. Another great life lesson. Teachers use stories to engage students and transport them to new worlds, to broaden their perspectives. Much like we trust the board to make the best decisions to guide our district, you must trust us to make the best decisions to provide our students with opportunities, to hear students that, to hear stories that grow their understanding of the world around them. We are not here to indoctrinate students or even tell them what to think. That's a parent's job. Every educator I know respects that. Teachers are here to make sure our students meet their educational goals. Trust, that is our main focus. In classrooms, teachers model healthy behavior, a desire for deeper understanding, and aversion towards quick judgment and a search for expanding our perceptions. The kids are watching us. Let's not lead based on fear or our students deserve better."
Thank you. Next, we have Reagan New.
Hello, Reagan New. I teach at Lakeland Middle School. I also live in the district. To whom it may concern, my name is Reagan New, and I have worked in the Lakeland Joint School District for six years. I love my job and the community I am serving. I teach sixth grade English at Lakeland Middle School and currently feel very insecure in my job and how I am being supported. Teachers are given a process to follow when using a novel in the classroom. We can choose from a board-approved list of books, or we can submit a book to the board for review and begin when they have approved to purchase it. Both of these options give final decision to the board and show that these books have been reviewed and approved by the board before teachers begin to use them in class. In the last two years of teaching English, two different novels have been board-approved, but then pulled from classrooms. Regardless of the reasons, this shows that the board is either not reviewing the books and making educated decisions or they are unwilling to stand by their decisions. I understand that we are a district that values parent input, and I respect and appreciate this as a parent in the district myself, but there needs to be a line where the board reviews its decisions before allowing one parent complaint to derail entire classrooms for years to come. These books have been impactful to students, and they have loved reading them in class. I've had many students state that these books were their favorites and really made them think about their world. Is this not what we want from future citizens? To think about the world around them critically? Novels can, of course, be delicate subjects as they are stories often based on real-life situations and experiences. Novels create the perfect moments for teachers to teach themes and connect books to students' lives. A good book is supposed to stir conversation and draw people in. We would not read if it didn't have an impact on us. As teachers, we want to choose novels that will be of interest to our students and engage them in discussion with their peers, and we want to choose relevant novels that are set in the world that they can relate to and learn from, as well as in strange worlds that engage their imagination and curiosity. We focus on choosing novels that will help us effectively reach the state standards in both reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We make these decisions based on the students we see and work with every single day, and we make these decisions based on our education and training in this field. We are professionals who have gone through many classes, examinations, and trials to prepare for these decisions. We have worked with the protocols set forth to get books approved and purchased. We have also taken steps to alert families to the books we use in class through syllabi. We have also, oh, sorry. Now we are facing repercussions of decisions made by those who have not read the books or seen the positives they can bring to a classroom, where you're being affected by the decisions of those who put these protocols in place and are not standing by the decisions that they have made. I ask that if the board has approved a book, that they review concerns carefully and discuss outcomes and communicate this to the teacher before final decisions are made that affect the teacher and the classroom. By no means am I asking for the board to ignore a parent's concern, but include the teacher in the decision. When a book is abruptly removed from a class, the teacher is left to explain that decision to the students and families and come up with new lessons on the spot. I believe a process can be created to handle parent complaints on books, and support should be provided to teachers when a decision is made. We would love to feel supported in our work and decisions and brought into the conversation if changes need to be made. With all of this said, I ask that the board review the process on how books are approved. I ask that the board create and share a flow process for how complaints will be addressed in the future, and then follow this protocol. I ask that the board takes a step back and reviews how it is supporting its English teachers in this trying time of controversy and polarizing opinions. We simply want to see our students grow and learn.
Thank you. Melanie Worth?
Good evening. My name is Melanie Worth. I'm the librarian at Timberlake Middle School. I would like to address some of the questions raised in the previous meeting. The questions were asked last week. How many titles do we have on our district protective book set list? We have close to two hundred titles on the district protected book set list. This district protective book set list was brought to the board meeting for approval on October fourteenth of twenty-twenty-one. Additionally, there was a question regarding when the book, The Truth as Told by Mason Biddle, was approved. The book was already in the Spirit Lake Elementary Library when we selected it for our classroom novel. It was added in March of two thousand and eighteen. At that time, when selecting novels for the classroom, we did not need board approval if we already had the book in our library because it had already been approved for library use. We only needed to seek approval if we were purchasing something new. This procedure was later changed to require board approval only for materials used in the classroom in December of twenty-twenty-two. Starting in May twenty-twenty-two, Superintendent Lisa Arnold, the middle school ELA teachers, and the librarians discussed the books we wanted to purchase to update our middle school novel sets. When putting together the order, we checked for reviews, interest and, interest levels, and reading levels, and verified if we already had the books in our libraries. I am explaining this to clarify for the board members who asked the question. So yes, The Truth as Told by Mason Biddle was approved and was on the district protected book set list. So due to recent circumstances, I just want, as a representative of our school district libraries, one of my responsibilities is to evaluate books for their suitability for various age groups of our students. My husband and I are both devout Christians, and we studied here at Lakeland, including our children, too. And soon, our grandchildren will also be attending the school district. Therefore, I am especially mindful of the concerns of our community and committed to ensuring that our curriculum and books are appropriate for all students. I make sure that the books we are reviewing are fitting for our classrooms' use and do not include controversial topics. I will only suggest books that meet these criteria. Our district has made significant progress in empowering parents to make informed decisions regarding their children's reading materials. While we understand that there is always room for improvement, we will remain steadfast in our commitment to providing a safe and high-quality education to the children in our community because we too care for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Janelle Dexter.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Dexter, and I'm the librarian at LMS. At the April twenty-twenty-three board meeting, Board Chair Thompson stated regarding the supplemental resources list, "The intent for stakeholder input is for families to feel they can provide their honest and fair critiques," and she was not appreciative of the librarian's comments on the table books. I can only assume you meant my asking that people actually read the books. Right now, I am speaking as a constituent of this district with stakeholder input, as I am part of this committee. I have reported to this board numerous times during the previous school year regarding books on the list with negative reviews, permissions the librarians were given at the September twenty-twenty-two board meeting. But as part of this community and the school district, as well as part of, as part of this community, as well as the school district, as well as part of the committee, I have every right to question why this board continues to accept feedback based on third-party reviews. How can you consider these honest and fair critiques, your own words, Ms. Thompson, when the book was not read? Instead, reviews are given using phrases such as "in reviews I read" or "some reviews said," et cetera. If teachers are taking the time to research books and curriculum to use in their classrooms, then they deserve a fair and honest examination of those books. If someone cannot read the book, then they should abstain from giving a review. Likewise, reviewers should stop accusing any teacher of introducing homosexual relationships to eleven- and twelve-year-olds or any teacher of educating children with regards to sexual orientation. Contrary to claims by a reviewer, this book does not violate LJSD Policy thirty-two eighty-one as it in no way discusses, addresses, or educates children about sexual orientation, and to accuse any teacher in our district of this when they know the law is slanderous. Unfortunately, none of this would have happened had Ms. Thompson followed district protocol and sent this back to the teacher and her administration to handle. Instead, she chose to insist on the book being removed even though other teachers had permission from parents, thereby upsetting their curriculum. Dr. Passley asked that it not be removed, but as I was told in a meeting on March nineteenth by district admin, Ms. Thompson was insisting it be removed. Ms. Thompson, you asked last week how this book could be on our list if it was only published in twenty-eighteen. In May twenty-twenty-two, when the librarians, ELA teachers, and superintendent met to discuss books we'd like to purchase in order to update our novel sets, we'd like to purchase in order to update our novel sets, it was our understanding that if a book was already in our library, it had already been approved for library use, and we did not need approval. At that time, we only needed to seek approval for any new title being purchased. We checked reviews, reading and interest levels, and whether or not a title was already in our libraries. Mason Biddle passed all our requirements as it was entered into the Spirit Lake Library in 2018. It wasn't until December 2022 that the board no longer required approval for every new title in the library, only those for use in the classroom. Trustee Grissom said at the meeting last week regarding this whole issue, "This is the first major hiccup we've had in this process." I disagreed. The first major hiccup was accepting reviews on books that had obviously not been read. Now people have taken a wonderful book that our students enjoy and twisted it into something ugly based on two words, Benny's Dads. I reached out to the author, Leslie Connor. This is what she had to say. "I vow to write in a way that naturally and honorably acknowledges the changing, make that change, face a family across the United States of America and the world. We have same-sex couples, and they have children. Our members are minorities and people with disabilities..."
You need to stop your time is up. Thank you. I appreciate it. Next up is Mary Kemp. Is she outside?
Hello. I am Mary Kemp, parent and community member. I know I'm not allowed to ask questions with answers, so these are more just questions for community members that I'm kind of thinking of, that I would like to share and maybe have some answers in the future. So first, the board and the community knew that our contract was ending with our current SROs at the end of last year, which is why this was brought up originally in July of 23 minutes. My question is, why and where were appropriate funds not allocated for? A lot of the factual points I was going to bring up, Christine Corey, fellow community member, brought up that there was an increase in levy funding that was advertised for a $92,000 increase for security at our schools. Safety, I feel like, shouldn't be something that is up for debate. The fact that our levy was pushed, and our community already has such a hard time passing levies, as we have seen, it is honestly a little scary knowing that we, as the public and parents and community members, were told that there is an increase. We're keeping our SROs. This is a priority to us. I know that is potentially changing. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is just a personal emotional side of it. A lot of kids in our district unfortunately come from chaotic homes. I was one of those who came from a broken home. Some of these kids, the only positive interaction that they have from law enforcement on their daily life is our SROs. Changing that out, bringing in an armed guard, hopefully they have appropriate specific school resource officer training, but the relationships that are built from an officer being in there every day for years to those kids who are scared of police officers on a daily basis is detrimental to our kids and our youth. And I think that's a very important emotional side to bring to this, on top of all the factual numbers. Privately, if the decision is made that SROs are no longer an option, there is a private party, a local school member, Mark Tempesta, who is a CPA, who is willing to help create private funding to keep our SROs. So if for whatever reason the agenda for the budget and allocating funds is not there, the public is willing to help, for people to know that there is somebody out there helping to create private funds, to make up the difference of between $7,000 and $10,000 that it costs for an SRO. The other question...
I'm sorry. I'm running out of time. Thank you. Ms. Kemp, if you would like to send your questions to the clerk to have them provided to the board, that would be great.
Okay. I'll do. Thank you.
Do you want to take a moment and look through the packet that we have?
So these aren't being read at law?
No. According to our policy, they're handed to the board.
And my, yeah, it's right here. It's stuck to the other page. That one was between these two, and they...
Okay. And everybody else is fine. Okay. I apologize. We have one more person. Susan Chatterton.
My name is Susan Chatterton. I'm a parent in the district, and I'm an ELA and social studies teacher at Lakeland Middle School. I love my job and the opportunity I've had to teach the advanced ELA classes this year. I have pushed my students, and they have been amazing in their learning and their perseverance. Their abilities have been incredible to see and to help develop. I know the laws and the school district policies. I know what I am allowed and not allowed to teach. My job as an ELA teacher is to help my students to understand how a plot and characters develop through a story. It is to teach vocabulary and grammar. It is also to help my students understand how to research a topic and write about it. I do my ELA job through reading different novels and having discussions about these specific things. I would like to share my motivation for choosing the novel, Truth As Told by Mason Biddle. We finished our novel and our essay for quarter three early and had two weeks left before spring break. In talking with my students, I asked their opinion about what they would like to do for those two weeks. They didn't want to do another essay, but the majority of them said that they would like to just read a novel for fun. I told them that I would love to do that, but we would also have to practice our ELA skills. I chose to use this book because it was a board-approved book. I also knew that it was an easier book to read and that the students could get through it within seven days. That would leave enough time to do the other things that I had done in the past with this book. The story setting is in an apple orchard, so I introduced the book with an apple taste test while learning the different types of apple names and what they are used for. This book also focuses on the Cates of Lascaux in France, so we did a virtual tour and a discussion. We practiced some inference skills about how Mason got his job. We also discussed his medical condition and his dyslexia. My plan for the rest of the unit was to teach the kids how to make apple crisp and to bring in a guest speaker that has dyslexia and was able to overcome that struggle to the point that she owns her own business. That was it. I had no secret motivation for reading this book with my students. I was not trying to sneak anything into the classroom or trying to hide anything from the parents. Since this is a board-approved book, and I had taught it in the past, it did not occur to me that I needed to do anything else. We, as a class, just wanted to take a short break from the academic rigor. I know for the future that I will need to make sure that if I choose to make changes in my classroom, I will make sure that everyone that needs to know will know. I wish that those that chose to speculate on my motivations would have just called me and had a conversation. It has been hurtful to see my name in connection with people's opinions that I was doing something untoward. I live my life with honesty and integrity, and some simple conversations could have prevented all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone need any more time to finish? There's a public input you were handed.
Board chair.
Yes.
It looks like we have one more person who... Did you submit your... Jaclyn submitted a request to provide public input?
I thought it was included in this.
It's included in, because I had asked it. It would be present, and I never thought it was present. So it is...
So the board members all have it? She wasn't aware that you were going to be present, so she...
Oh, well, yeah, she filled out a request to address the board. Go on. Are there others?
All of them are. Every one of these is.
They're just ones separate that I'm...
So these aren't...
Were not going to be present. I wasn't aware that she was going to be here. I had asked.
Okay.
And all the other ones knew. I had confirmation that they were not going to be here, and I had confirmation for the ones that were going to be here.
Okay. And I guess we... Can you look through there while we allow Jaclyn Myers to speak, to see if there's any that specifically say we're not here, because we can let the others speak? Does that make sense? Because if there were requests that said, "I'm not going to be here," please give this to the board.
Right, which is what everything that's in this packet and that have reached out.
Oh, you have power. Okay.
Asking them if they're going to be present or not, and I didn't get a response. So I just assumed.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, somebody specifically say, "Please read on behalf of me at the board meeting."
Right, but our policy states if you're not going to be present, then you can put it in writing and it will be handed to the board. So Jaclyn Myers, if you want to come forward.
My name is Jaclyn Myers, and I have three children in the district, including a sixth grader. And this isn't part of my speech, but my daughter's in Mrs. Chatterton's class, and we have discussed everything that went on and...
Please don't use teacher's names.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say something nice. Anyway, I personally don't think anything nefarious happened. And I think that there have been lots of honest mistakes that have happened, and I would like everybody to just have a little patience and grace all around. I am disappointed to see how this issue of using an approved, unapproved book in the curriculum has been exploited by those with their own agendas who want to sensationalize the facts, belittle the real concerns of parents, create undue stress in many people's lives, and use buzzwords like book banning to trigger an emotional response and compel people to act without thinking through the issues. Our valuable school district will not be able to prosper in this hostile environment. All sides need to tone down the rhetoric and have a reasonable discussion. We don't have to let those who want to pit us against each other win. I listened to the board meeting last week and have since talked to the superintendents and teachers and many parents in the district. From those conversations, I've been informed that this book is on a list of curricular items that were never formally approved by the board. But current policies 2520, 2100, 2540, and 2340 that are in effect state that all books that are used in the curriculum must be formally approved by the board. Policies matter, and I'm glad that this board and the administration are working to make sure that district policies and Idaho state law are being followed. Regarding the book in question, we don't all agree about whether the content of this book warrants it being excluded from curriculum for 11- and 12-year-olds. I get that. We don't all have to agree. It just matters what the policy says. And it states, "Sexual orientation is not a subject matter the district shall discuss, address, or educate children about." The books assigned to children by teachers are curriculum and thus educational, so assigning a book for in-class reading that would bring up discussions of sexual orientation would be in violation of this policy. Many parents in this district have previously lived in other school districts. We have witnessed how complacency and the slow creep across parental boundaries allows classwork to drift off course, eventually leading to a broken education system that cannot be mended. You are left with a school district you no longer recognize, are discouraged from participating in, and can't in good conscience subject your children to. Without vigilance and participation from our community, this school district will also eventually deteriorate, the way so many others have. And in that scenario, no one, parent, teacher, or student will succeed. I would like to acknowledge that I, and I think many other parents, understand how difficult the time this must be to be a teacher. I understand that this isn't how things used to be, but we also must deal with the world as it is. And in order to keep Lakeland a great school district, we must protect these schools and children against the cultural pressures being imposed upon us. It's a scary time to be a parent right now, too, and we're all just doing the best we can. I would like to ask for everyone involved to be given grace as they work through this situation. Fanning the flames of divisive issues like this will be the downfall of public schools. I hope and must believe that most of us want the same thing, to find a way to unite parents and teachers with our shared goals and to continue to support an exceptional school district. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Nate DePutter, is he here?
He had to go.
Okay. Sabrina Edmondson? Thank you. Jessica Kaminsky?
Jessica? Nope.
Okay. Clay Myers? Okay. Moving on from public input, we'll go into reports. First up is the financial report. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns we need to discuss about the financial reports? I do have one question for you, Jessica.
Jessica Granton, Chief Finance Officer.
Thank you. Is there a way that we can get the school reports to be in a more cohesive format and easier read than just the reports that get printed out from Skyward?
Which reports are you referring to?
The SBAA account ledger report, reports?
That would require me, I can put them into Excel for you, and it would just be done. I'm sure that the report that you're seeing is the canned report from the system.
No, I understand that. Okay. I would like us to figure out something, because all of these pages, and they're just, they're not easy to read. And I know, I would like them to be easier and more transparent, so that anyone that reads it can figure it out. If we can work on something for that, that would be great.
That would require us to create a manual report, but I can do that.
Okay. I mean, I know we're under a budget crunch right now and all of that, so if we could have something for the start of the next school year, that would be great. What do you want me to see different? I would just like it to be, like I've mentioned time and time again, at other board meetings, the frustration is just the way it's laid out and dismayed. We have one account, and then we have an L account, and then we have, you know, debits and credits and things that haven't cleared. But then it just, if it could just be, this is what the school has, this is what they've expensed, this is what's encumbered or pending, and at the end of the day, this is the amount of money the school has at the end of the day. If there's student account funds, those should be identified, book funds, etc. I just think that it could be...
Are you looking for more of a summary, like I'm presenting with the monthly financials?
I would prefer a summary.
Okay.
I don't know what the other trustees would like to see. I'll have to think about that and think of how we can work together to...
I mean, it would be simple. If you're looking for something that is a summary, like we do with the monthly financials, that do not have all the detailed lines that give line by line, I'd be happy to put them into our existing financial report in the format that I already have in place that the board reviews all of the general fund and other funds in. We can do that for the SBAA funds as well. That would be actually a pretty quick one. It's just, then you would lose the transactional history.
Okay. And I get that. Maybe we can discuss this further at the budget workshop.
Okay.
As far as format and layout, so that we're getting the information that we all want and that the community can understand. Any further questions or comments on the financial report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I did have, oops. Can you, sorry, I just remembered it was way up here. Can you remind me again, the state base support, how is that paid to us or...
The state base support, that's our SBAA, salary base enforcement.
Okay, okay, sorry.
So we receive some in November, some in February, a little bit in May, and then the remainder in June once they've concluded, the best 28 weeks. and then the remainder in June, once they've concluded, the best 28 weeks.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the previous meeting, minutes of subcommittee meetings to be accepted, the HR items, and the regular and special bills. Any comments on the meetings, the minutes of the previous meetings? I am curious on our last executive session on March 19th. That was the first meeting that we had with respect to IBV, the IBV agreement. I thought Rebecca was there. Was she not there? Because she's not identified as...
Not identified.
All right. Must have been the budget one, because I know I've seen her at the table.
Yes, it was the budget one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the minutes of the subcommittee, subcommittee meeting minutes to be accepted? Okay. HR items? On the bills list?
The board approved the renewal of our Spanish program.
Is this a one-time payment for four years?
Yes.
I'm Lisa, the light pole replacement at Timberlake High School. Is this the one that we're being reimbursed for?
I believe so.
We've already received, I'm sorry, Jessica Granton CFO, we've already received the money from it. That was the accident last summer where someone backed into the pole.
Right, okay. The amount for the district fencing project, is that in total, or will there be anything further?
That is in total.
Okay.
That was majority funded by the first round of security or major grant, addressed with the facilities.
But significantly less than what we thought. I think we anticipated $290,000 total for the cost.
Right, we had allocated $70,000 out of district funds and it looks like we've only thrown $1,170,000. So that's excellent.
That's really good.
There's bills for $6,500 for sweeping gravel.
Sweeping gravel? Do you mind?
We do it annually.
Is that, I assume that's a private company?
Yep.
Have you ever talked to the city? Do they have a sweeper?
I actually have through the years, not in a context that we've set up any kind of arrangement to where they would support. We got it run out to plenty of ways. You know, we're a little bit spread out that way on the schools that we put the rock down. Trying to kind of slowly wean us off the rock and use more of the liquid, but there's just situations that the rock is the only thing that's going to be safe. So we're left every spring to clean up what we put down. Now, this year, we put down less, but it still runs around $6,500 annually. It's a lot to pick up.
Mike, can you stand, please?
Sure. Mike, for your office facilities director.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The carpet that was taken up at Timberlake High School, are we replacing that? What was the situation?
No, so the carpet was in the mat room.
Okay.
And they have rusting mats that sit on there. And through the years, the carpet got kind of dingy and rose. And so they, we demoed the carpet.
Right.
And they're gonna leave the concrete, put the mats over the concrete.
Okay.
Board Chair Thompson? Just to point out, it is line number 108306. It says, "Second Resource Officer 923 to 424, not previously invoiced." The county was only sending an invoice for one of our SROs. So our CFO noticed that and reached out to the county and let them know that we would love to pay for our second SRO if they would just send us an invoice. So that's why that dollar amount is as high as it is.
Thank you. And who got new cafeteria tables?
Actually, we ordered all new cafeteria tables last year. It was an oversight that there were no handicap tables ordered at that time. So each school got a handicap complaint table, an ADA table.
Okay, perfect. I don't have any further questions. Does anybody else?
The fencing project cost like $231,000. Was that part of the grant for their security?
Yes. So we received $220,000 from the state for that one.
Yeah.
Yep, so the first round of security our future.
Right.
We have $9,000 billed at Johnson Controls for some work that they did. Can you give us some detail on what that was?
Uh, would have been...
Please stand, sorry.
Would have been related, I would have to look specifically at the bill. Would have been related to the freezing fire suppression lines we had here that gold snapped. Yeah.
It was at TMS and Tealeak.
Okay.
It was both of them.
Yeah.
So Twin Lakes was part of the insurance thing. Timberlake Middle School did not have enough damage to worry an insurance thing.
Yeah, we had several spots that were just, the heads were compromised, where they could come in, replace the head. But then we had Twin Lakes that let go, and that was replacing, you know, full supply lines and all that, so.
And Johnson Controls does that kind of stuff?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So Johnson Controls does all of our part annual panel testing, fire suppression testing, and they're kind of a one-stop shop that way, rather than having, we've done this before, where I've got, you know, five different vendors to accomplish the same thing. They're good, and they're part of the Sourcewell co-op pricing structure, so we get the absolute best price we can, and they've been good. So, yeah.
That's all I have. Anyone else want to add anything?
No, I think that was it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, I will entertain a motion on that consent agenda. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to old business, we have the superintendent follow-up. Is there no one else out there?
There are.
Thank you. Any questions on the superintendent follow-up? Seems pretty explanatory. Okay. Pursuant to our policy, we're supposed to be updated on class sizes quarterly. When we have two and a half teachers, what does that mean?
It indicates there's a combo class there.
Okay.
So you have two teachers that teach third, two teachers that teach fourth, and then one teacher that teaches fourth, third, and fourth. So there are half for each of the three of them.
Okay. And I would assume that we don't have a third of a kid in class?
No, so, yeah, so it would be 20, 20, and 21 is how you would read that, if that were the number.
I don't know, 23 and a third, and then 19.67 and 25.67.
Yeah, so the .67 would mean, it would be 25, 26, 26. And .33 would be 25, 25, 26, so, yeah.
Well, thank you for the update.
You are very welcome.
We have the financial follow-up. Oh, Jessica Granton.
Jessica Granton, CFO.
Thank you. I was noticing on the board-approved projects, we're still showing a $70,000 credit in the fencing, but it came in under budget. Can that be corrected? I mean, to show an actual, because that wasn't updated. The Fund 421 on the board facility projects detail. I'm curious, let me see if I can open that up. There we go. And it's just trying to wrap my head. On the line item 19 for Lakeland Middle School, you have the connotation off to the side about the siding project and the door project, which isn't equaling what's laid out there, because down at the bottom here on Lakeland Middle School, there's Architects West for $360. That's not accounted for up there for those projects?
That's an oversight on my part.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering if it could be broken apart in all three groups, or what? Because your note to the side says it's for apples, Spirit Lake and Lakeland.
Yeah, it is for Lakeland. So if you'll notice, on 215, there were multiple, there were charges to each school. The description for each one on 215 says it's for each school. The dollar amount charged to each school is there. I just, oversight, but I didn't grab the bullet.
No, that's okay, because I found it, because the first time, like, this doesn't make any sense. And then, when I kept scrolling down, I saw that it was there.
So the $360 would be part of the siding project, not the doors.
Okay, okay, good to know. Those were just my only two.
That should be the last one for Lakeland Middle School. We were able to close that one out completely.
Okay. So everything is done for Lakeland Middle School?
Yes.
Okay. There's no more invoices that are going to come in, or?
For Lakeland Middle School, correct.
Okay, perfect.
In my financial follow-up, you'll see that there's a note regarding the change order for the schools slated this summer. They discovered a design flaw on Lakeland Middle School. The company is taking care of the, I don't want to call it damage, but the area that has an issue. They're covering that out of their pocket, but because it is a known flaw, they're asking us to adjust the specs on the other two schools.
Okay.
So that's where the change order is stemming from.
So not knowing what the flaw was, is it Mr. Ferriola?
Mr. Ferriola, please introduce yourself.
I'm Mike Ferriola, the floor director.
Is the flaw also on those two buildings?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it's a drip edge flaw, essentially. The water runs off the roof, it's allowing it to wick back onto the fascia.
Okay.
And sustained water on fascia, I mean, even the best paint will bubble. It was an honest, I mean, you wouldn't have necessarily caught that. So anyway, we're making adjustments on the next two schools to avoid it.
Perfect.
Have the middle school leachers been ordered?
They will go out to bid. We were planning to do them in conjunction with the floor, so that we didn't have to uninstall or reinstall them. So we do have to go out to bid for them.
Right.
Yeah, and then we're planning to be installing to be in tandem with the refinishing of that floor. So the painting will commence as soon as school gets out. They weren't able to secure enough funds for the mural. So those will be done this summer, and then the floors and the bleachers will be done at the beginning of the next summer.
Paint first, floor second, bleachers third?
Yes, only installed once.
Anything else on the financial update? And don't destroy the flooring in the process of...
The bleachers, yes, I know. There's some ink there.
No, I'm good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mike, you can just stay there. Because we're calling to facilities.
Uh huh.
But thank you for taking care of the flagpole while making sure that is being installed now.
Sure, yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Again, that's it.
Moving on to new business, first up is policies. The Parents and Family Engagement, the Parent and Family Engagement Guidelines, the Education of Homeless Children. Those three policies were prepared by, or were reviewed, I guess, I should say, by Kelsey Badger, because they deal with her realm. So she reviewed them, did, she went through them all to make sure they were in compliance with what we needed to be in compliance with for the basic program requirements for family and parent engagement within the programs that we offer within special education, so...
The title, specifically.
Title, thank you. The policy committee did not dive into them due to the fact that they do need to meet title requirements. So I'm just letting the board know that the policy committee did nothing with them. They were entrusted to Kelsey Badger, and so they were brought forward from her. And... The Student Interview Questioning or Arrest, Student Arrest Form and Student Interview Form, those were all reviewed by legal counsel. And at the last board meeting, it was suggested that they go back to the policy committee to add the language in "from legal," which it did. The committee did do that. I do believe on Policy 3545, there's a little bit of, what do we want the policy to say? Because, and it's under the interviews by school administrators, there is a lot of concern from the school administrators that the verbiage needs to allow them freedom to unders, freedom to determine if they need a second person there when interviewing kids or not. So we were going back and forth, trying to figure out how, initially, some words were just slapped on, and it wasn't very clear. So we came up with these two different statements. The board needs to weigh in on which one they feel the policy needs to reflect.
Which one was it?
It's Policy 3545, the Student Interview Questioning or Arrest. It's under "Interviews by School Administrators, Student Suspects."
It's toward the bottom of page one.
Mm-hmm.
If I may, one thing to consider is at Mountain View Alternative High School, we only have one administrator and we don't have a principal assistant in that building. So he is very concerned about the word "shall," because it will be problematic if he has to try to find an adult to be with him during an interview on a consistent basis.
Well, the other, from a principal's point of view, I guess, I would suggest that sometimes you interview a student without knowing where it's going.
Right.
And until you've gotten well into it, you may not have determined that it's a spankable offense.
Right.
So if I'm gonna call a second adulting to listen to an interview, it may go nowhere, or it may ultimately end up being a major infraction. So that's the dilemma that the principal has, I think, is, and why do you give them the latitude to make that determination?
Well, one of their concerns also was that, it was expressed that if the administrator... it was expressed that if the administrator feels it's just an in-school suspension, it shouldn't merit having another adult present, only if it's out of school. And there is a distinction within the two statements. Because on the second one, you know, it's, bottom line is, once it's determined the violation warrants an out-of-school suspension, then another adult shall be present during the questioning of any student suspect. Because then there is an informal hearing that's held as set forth in Policy 3330. Which it's that way also with apparently an in-school suspension. But my thought was that, you know, once that administrator's decided, okay, the hammer needs to come down on this, well, for their own protection and the district's protection, and given all the rights involved in it, I would think a second person needs to be present. Now, with that understanding, after it's all said and done, if the administrators decided, I don't necessarily think everyone's going to go back through and say, let's have a redo of the conversation so the second person could be present. But I think that's what everyone's concern is, is that's the expectation. So I don't know.
The other thing that comes into play, I think, is depending on the incident, you may end up interviewing more than one student. You may be interviewing a student who witnessed a certain act.
Right.
And then come to find out they participated. And we've kind of heard some of that even in the student hearings that we've.
Right.
So we just need to give that building administrator the latitude as they feel they need it.
Okay.
Weren't they there on this policy?
Administrators?
Yeah.
There were some. It came, it was originally written. It went out for parent feedback. It came back, then it went to the board. Then it went back to committee. Then it went back out to administrators. And there are, I would say, probably three or four administrators that do come to policy committee faithfully. And, you know, their input's extremely valuable. So I think you only should,
you only should need a second person if it's a crime. You know what I'm saying? If it's a crime, not a, so if they break a policy in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension, it shouldn't be, shouldn't have to have another adult with you. But if it's a crime, you know, law enforcement's involved, yeah, they should have somebody with them. Because now you're interrogating the kid without their parents present.
Right, which isn't supposed to happen.
Right.
Yeah, that's addressed through.
Yes. So within this policy with this language, how do we want it either to be rewritten? Is it struck? Is, what do we want the policy to be finalized to say?
Well, maybe following up on what Dave suggested, if administrators foresee a referral to law enforcement,
Okay.
then that's the time to bring the people in.
Okay, so if the violation warrants law enforcement's involvement, then another adult shall be present during the questioning of any student suspect? Okay. Did she catch that?
She will, she watches the video.
So if we go with option one and then remove, you're going to take out pretty much suspension either in-school or out-of-school and add if the violation warrants law enforcement's involvement. Or is it law enforcement?
Involvement.
Involvement or?
Involvement by law enforcement.
Okay. Warrants involvement by law enforcement. And then you can remove the other one. 4210, use of, community use of school facilities. That was a heavy work through by Jessica and Rebecca. It came to the committee. There was a lot of input. The, that form, that 4210 F2, 4210 P, those did not go out for community input because of what, the rules behind what were required and how we're expected to allow use of our buildings. So those did not go out for community input. However, they did involve a lot of input. I mean, Jessica basically rewrote them, which is awesome. But the committee also weighed in on it. And so did the high school principals. And I believe some of the elementaries as well. And the G, I think all the principals weighed in on it. Not 100% on that, but I do believe so. The form has some green highlighted areas that we need to determine. It's on the liability, insurance, and damage. Jessica did work with legal counsel on this portion so that the language was on the F2 form, so that the language was correct, accurate, appropriate, et cetera. But we need to decide on the liability, insurance, and damage, what we're going to expect. So as a board, we do need to make those decisions. And it's my understanding this isn't a form. We haven't had this before, which is why legal was weighed in on it. Not in this format.
Yeah, I have to be honest with you, I just had a thought that crossed my mind. It seems like in some of this, we're not differentiating between policy and procedures. Except we're including procedures as part of policy. And normally, they're, procedures are administrative type things, following the policy. You know, when we, when we adopt forms, for example, that's kind of an administrative arena. I'm just thinking that about it.
Okay.
So maybe there's some good rationale for doing what we're doing.
Well, because it's affiliated with the policy and it's out there under our policies and procedures, that's why it's coming before the board. If the board no longer wants to handle the forms or the procedures, I don't know how the check and balance will go with making sure that those marry with the policy so that there's no complications. I mean, because if no one's making sure that's not occurring, which when I say no, that's the board. Making sure that they're all in alignment, then we're still on the hook for it. We, meaning the board.
Well, I think the procedural implementation of the policy is appropriate in the form that calls for that also. I mean, and originally, we got down this track from ISBA and all the changes. And that's when they started giving us the procedures for implementing certain policies in the forms. So that's, you're right. So there are the boards' policy procedures and then administrative procedures. But that's where this all came from, was something that they started doing and giving to us a form and a procedure with the policy. And they were the ones that started denoting the F or the P or whatever it was.
Right.
That's where all that came from. That's all their, this Idaho School Board Association.
That organization that we don't belong to.
Right, that's what I was just thinking, the same thing. What do we care what they say? Yeah. Hang on a second, please.
Lynn, have the assistant superintendent. Some of the annual policies that the board is required to review are procedures. So there are certain things that in there, I don't think there are any forms, but there's probably two or three procedural where 4210, and I think it's 4220, you're just supposed to approve the procedure portion of it, not even the policy portion. So there is some requirements legally from the procedure standpoint in the annual policies.
Why would we approve a procedure without a policy?
That's one of the annual policies that's required by law to be reviewed annually.
I guess I'm not following.
Statute outlines particular policies and/or procedures that the board has to annually review and approve.
I understand that.
What Lynn is saying is that some of them are not just the policy, it's the procedure. It's that is statutorily required for board approval.
You know, it's fine, it's just,
It's different.
You know, the administration is comfortable with all this arrangement. That's fine. But, you know, I don't want to do the administration's work for them.
No, I understand what you're saying. I think part of, if we're not approving the procedures to support our policy, that could become problematic. But if this board doesn't want to approve procedures and doesn't want to approve forms, then we need to have that conversation and make it.
And it may depend on the policy that we're dealing with and, you know, how extensive that procedural portion turns out to be.
Well, and like I did say, with respect to the form and to the policy and to the procedures, Jessica and Rebecca really took this under their wings and made it what it is. Because what we had before.
It's great.
Yeah, what we had before was not so good.
I think the change from what maybe you were used to is that this is definitely a more collaborative process where the policy committee does do a really good job of reaching out to the groups that the policies or the procedures or the forms most impact. And sometimes they just ask them to take the lead and to make the changes, and then they bring it back to the policy committee. Sometimes we work on it together. But I definitely have opportunity to give a lot of input, as much as I want, for all procedures that are going into the board. So I'm comfortable with it.
I'm not trying to muddy the water.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I hear what you're saying. But yeah, when we're using a form bank from an organization that we're no longer affiliated with, until we can get something, some other legal basis to help with policies, we're stuck. Kind of go around what they gave us and then we just hopefully get it to where it actually fits our district. Okay. So on that note, within the, yeah, the form, liability, insurance, and damage, we need to determine what the limits of the policy we are expecting from someone that's renting our facilities. So how much money for injuries or wrongful death of any one person in one accident? How much money for, meaning what's the policy limit for injuries to or wrongful death of all persons in one accident? What's the financial limit for the damage to or loss of property in any one accident?
I think we need, just my, this is my knee jerk on this, is that we need to find out from ICRMP,
Okay.
what those dollar amounts should be. And I would say that we should just table this until we have that information.
Okay. Do you want to table all three in the 4210 world? Or just, okay?
Well, I didn't know if we wanted to go through all of the policies.
I would much rather just motion as we go along.
Okay.
Because then we don't forget and we don't lose things.
Okay. I will move to table 4210, 4210 F2, and 4210 P until we have further information from ICRMP.
A second. Give a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, many opposed. Very none, the motion carries. Lastly, is 4410 Investigations and Arrests by Law Enforcement. This was run by legal counsel because it is extremely similar to policy.
3545.
Thank you, 3545. In the sense that it's basically saying the same thing, but it is in two different sections of policy. So the 42 or 4410 is in the community section, just kind of giving them a heads up. Where the 35, 45 is in the student section, basically explaining to a student, this is how it's going to go down. So law enforc, or legal counsel said, you know, you don't have to have both policies. Do we want them or don't we want them? Does it matter? Does it not matter? I, me personally, I think it's fine that we have two policies in two different sections. But what I can say is that when it was sent out for public comment, it went, I don't know if it was like the next week or two weeks after the first one. And parents were a little bit like, well, this one's like simpler and we like this one, so why do we have to have the other one? So there was, that in and of itself created a little bit of confusion for public input. But I do think there's value in both policies. But it's whatever the board wants.
And I'm just asking, were any revisions made to eliminate some of the confusion that parents mentioned?
Well, part of the, part of the public comment when it comes back in on these is if the parent wants a follow-up, they provide the information. If they don't, and they just say what they say, and there's no follow-up because they've not given any information. And I can say that Lynn has done a phenomenal job that if a parent wants follow-up, she's on it and is following up. But on this one with the confusion, it was like, well, they didn't leave any information, so.
Lynn, have the assistant su. The other thing I would say is what we tried to do is, it was, the confusion was a lot about the narrative. And so they just liked one narrative better because it kind of said the same thing. So we really went through and tried to clean up so that it was short and sweet. And if it was saying the exact same thing, we just chose the one that we felt like had the best wording and Michelle works method, and then we put it in both. There were definitely pieces that were specific to kids and then pieces that were specific to adults. But we did try to clean it up so it was just really streamlined. So if it was, I mean, if it was literally saying the same thing, then we copied and pasted on both sides. And it took us a while. We had to sit side by side and just try to do that so that it didn't, we weren't having any conflicting information or giving more information in one that was left out of the other. So that was another piece.
Not to have a conflict.
Yeah. It felt like we did a good job of being really thorough with that.
We did. And Maria really helped out on that as well. I mean, she was, it says this exact same block on the other one, so.
But that was the confusion. It wasn't so much that, I mean, they did like one, but it was just like the wording of one maybe explained a little bit better or the words were a little bit nicer. It wasn't that it was really conflicting so much. It just, it was the narrative piece.
So.
I'm good.
You're good, all right. Any questions or additional conversations on any of the remaining policies that have not been tabled?
So if the community input was they liked the more simpler one and the feedback from legal was, well, you really don't have to have both, still pertaining to the same one? Is my thinking correct on that?
Okay.
I mean, I'm asking, is that, was she addressing the same policy where she said, well, you don't have to have both? And the parents were saying, we like the simpler language? It was the same?
The parents were saying that they felt that, like Lynn had said, the 4210 was a little, or 4410 was just softer, it didn't really go into much of anything. I think if we choose not to have policy, then we should not have 4410. Because 3545 basically details, this is how it's supposed to go down. There's a lot more teeth in 3545 than there is in 4410. And you're talking about student arrests.
And you'd think it would be the other way around.
I know. I know. So, but whatever this board wants to do.
3545 really directs how the administrator is going to manage all of those pieces to make sure that kids' rights, parents' rights. all of those pieces to make sure that kids' rights, parents' rights are staying intact.
Right.
I, if we were going to, if I agree with Michelle, if we were going to just have one, I would say that it needs to be the one that has the most information so that we are making sure we're taking care of people the way we need to.
However, 4410 does reflect the same language, so...
So, why did 4410 come about? If they're the same language-wise, they have different names, but they're the same...
Forty-four-ten sits in the community section of our policy manual and it hasn't been reviewed since 2007 and since we were doing...
Okay, so we already had, okay.
We did, we already had it.
Okay.
So since we were reviewing the one, we tried to make sure we review all of them that are intertwined so that they all say the same.
Gotcha. Okay, okay, okay. I see what you're saying. And it was all, they both were already there?
Yes.
And with the parent, okay, I got it now.
In the discussion, we talked about specifically that if, because 4410 is specific to community, the other one's specific to student, and so it wasn't intuitive to just, you wouldn't go search for that in the student if it was an adult. So that was really the sticking point of, from transparency standpoint, we had both. They are saying, that's why we wanted to make sure the language is the same, but we just felt like you wouldn't necess, you would not be able to find that, you wouldn't search in the student when you're talking about an adult, so because it is specific to community, that's really why we decided to keep it. We kind of went back and forth several times.
Okay.
So...
I guess if it was already existing, then we'll just keep it.
Okay.
It was adopted for a reason for some reason.
Well, and that logic makes sense to me to keep it.
Right. If it's a community member versus one of our students.
Right. Thoughts, huh?
I don't think you heard you.
Any thoughts, Fox? Okay. All right, Dave. If there's no further discussion, then all are to take a motion on the remaining policies.
I move to approve is submitted. I have an audit table.
Second. Give a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
I'd say, is that everything, except the ones we tabled?
Correct.
Just verifying.
Were you saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Very none, the motion carries.
Before we move off the policy topic, I have a request for the board to think about. I would suggest that in the future, we go to a two-reading calendar for policy adoption. One, introducing a new policy or a revised policy by title at least and have it, you know, available, but not do the adoption until the following year.
Okay.
And tonight is a little bit of the reason for that. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff here to decipher and go through and understand and so forth. And having a little more time to do that, I think would be advantageous. Just a thought, think about it.
No, and I hear you, and we did use to do that when our board meetings were two weeks apart, because we used to hold two board meetings a month, even though it was supposedly only one with an optional second, but it was usually a mandatory second. So what you're asking then is for there to be a whole month in between of policy adoption? And you're okay with that?
Yeah, I really am. I mean, some of the, some of the policies you're revising have been in place for a number of years, so an additional month probably isn't going to make a difference in terms of that, that's what... But it would give the public additional time to look at them if they need to or would like to.
Well, with...
But it gives us additional time to digest them as well.
Okay. And I, I mean, I do want to point out that with the way the policy committee's structured is that when the policy committee is done with its revisions, then the superintendent sends it out en masse to everyone for their input and review. And then, once the review, I believe they have a week, is that correct? To provide their input and then it comes back, the committee looks over everyone's input, makes its revisions, and then brings it to the board. So...
And I appreciate the fact that, you know, the committee does a lot of good work in policy development and you're kind of in-depth with it. And then it's kind of sprung on us and then we, you know, I don't want to feel like I'm just a rubber stamp, I guess.
No, I totally hear you on that. And that's part of too why we've pushed now to where instead of two days, we have like almost five days to review everything, which is awesome. But if you'd like a full month to review them...
I'm not saying we have to decide that tonight, but I'd like the board to think about it.
Okay, that's fair then. Would you like that added on to an agenda in the future?
If you would like to put it on the agenda, that would be great.
Okay. So can you note that down? Thank you.
I would say until we have that figured out, could we get like a little... Something summary of what... What, because you kind of gave us the little narrative of what's been done on that policy and what you're looking for from the board, if we could have that with our agenda?
Okay.
Now, it, there's the little note pieces in here that maybe we could...
Okay. What we could probably, okay, I hear you. And I'll have policy committee figure out how to do that so that when the policy comes up, it comes up with a narrative of expectation or what was changed or whatnot. That might help. Okay. Moving on to the supplemental curriculum for board consideration. I'll open it up for discussion once the board...
This has been so fun, Pat Lee. One, I don't know if it's the first or the second, but this is, our fourth grade teachers use this for Idaho history. Currently, I think we use the maybe 2008 or '09 version, this, or '11 version, I think this is the '12 version and they're asking for the '18 version. It's not the exact one, I'm still trying to find the exact one, but this is essentially what's in there if you guys just want to review it, so. I may have brought it forward, so thank you.
We're probably in there. Idaho history, I don't know. This is fourth grade.
Our fourth grade teachers do a great job of bringing Idaho to life, that's where you see all the wagons and we get to do all their square dancing and they even make bread and...
Quite a bit of Native Americans.
And again, this isn't the actual version that they're asking for, but it's a more updated one. I'm trying to get the version that...
This is a book we've been using, yeah?
No, that, we have an actually older version, but it is the same book, same author, but we even have an even older version. So, I think this is a 2011, the version that we're requesting is a 2018 and off the top of my head, I can't... Do you know what the version is we're currently using, like six or five?
No.
I can't remember.
Just out of curiosity, so we already have this, but why are we getting new ones?
They just asked for having a more updated one, just because it's just one part of what we do and so in an observation, they saw the most updated one and thought that would be a, because we've only been using the older version, so I wanted to bring it to the board to, for approval.
That's another, uh, Connerite eleven. The one we're currently, sometime before that.
The what, yes.
Sometime before that.
Yes.
And do you know how long it's been in place in the district?
Twenty... How long has the current fourth grade...
The rendezvous, Idaho.
Twenty-something.
Well, I used it when I taught fourth grade and that was...
That was a long time ago.
That was in 2000 and the book's rolled then. I don't honestly...
I said, there, the guy who covered it.
Well, we, I think ten years ago, because they were starting to fall apart and Amazon had some, we purchased more.
Replacements.
Yeah. The fourth grade teachers love that.
Taxpots are like everything else, they don't last forever.
Right. They just love, it's, the rendezvous Idaho is written from a diary perspective, so it's really easy reading for the kids and they're, they're very interested, obviously, in Idaho history, so it's really interactive.
It's fun.
Yeah.
I just wanted you guys to have kind of a sample of what the more updated one looked like, but again, that's a...
Even what's old.
That's an eleven and the request is an eighteen, so I'm still trying to find the eighteen and so that somebody will give it to me so I can bring it to you so you can see it.
You know, I've been having it a long time. Does Caxton printers call it still?
I reached out, so I'm just waiting to...
Normally they would have that.
Yeah.
Do you have any discussion on the supplemental resources that are being brought forward? And, I'm sorry, your last name's Sap?
Sap.
Sap? You spoke to It's Trevor Noah Born a Crime?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Since you did speak to the book, would you mind coming back to the voting, right?
Is that my name?
Yes, please.
That's Stephen Sap, seventh grade English teacher at KLS.
I finally don't feel short.
One of my questions to you is, because you've said you've taught this for a few years, is there a language issue within the book, sparse style language?
Absolutely not, not in the version that we have. We have a young adult version adapted for young readers, ten to thirteen target audience.
Okay.
There is absolutely, the adult version, I even had parents read it and reach out, like when they see at the beginning of the year, say, what's going on with this? And they say, well, I can come in, I can show you our books, there's no language, there's... All of that is removed, so the target audience is ten to thirteen years.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we have him come up? I have questions about the comments, if you read the comments in the book.
Okay. Stephen? Would you like, Mr. Sap? Mr. Sap.
Did you get a chance to read through any of the comments that were presented to the board?
You did?
Okay, great, perfect. Just I do not have time to listen or read every book.
No worries.
So the concerns that were here are these issues of, you know, the sexual content and all that, none of that exists in the book that you guys are reading?
Correct.
Or the other concerns that they had about the necklace scene and whipping the people and, I mean, how, how much of race and the apartheid is discussed as far as the colonialization and the black and the white issue and, like, how, I'm not familiar with...
I can, I can fill you in if you like.
Yeah, I would...
And I can kind of give you a brief walkthrough to what I do in my class. So we take a week and we get into the history of it. And so what happened in South Africa when they installed apartheid is they had five distinct races, you had to register your race.
Right.
And then that shaped their, their opportunities and the futures for those people within those groups. Our main character is born six years before the end of apartheid, so I want our kids to have a good understanding of it. We do, we watch an intro video, we do a lot of work so they understand the context of it. Because South Africa was so segregated, race plays a big part in the book. Like, it is very major in the book. But if you can come at it from a just fact-based, the kids have an understanding of that is just the way that South Africa was, they have an understanding of that going into the book, there's no confusion on race or anything like that walking throughout it.
So, and are the parents aware of this upfront?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Because like, yeah, I said, it's on my syllabus at the beginning of the year, I get parent signatures on all of that, so it's all been, hopefully, some parents just sign, obviously, like I do that with my kids sometimes, but, but they've seen it and they know. And I've had my fair share of people say, well, it's Trevor Noah, like, what's going on with that? But once you read the book, then you understand, he's telling stories and the stories impact kids, because they see themselves in others. And that's the big thing for me, even though it's a different continent, different country, they can see themselves in another person and so gaining perspective on your life through that way is helpful.
I'm just curious how you're, how you're giving the other perspective, though, if you haven't lived the perspective? And who you're choosing to give that perspective, because from a personal point, although my skin is very light, my mother is not, so I grew up with both perspectives. I watched her be very much discriminated against because of her heritage. And my grandfather, my grandfather had to register as black although he was not in this country. So I'm curious, when you have these conversations and we're introducing these to children, who, how is that being tackled and if the parents understand, I mean, because it is a very hot topic, you know? And I just want to make sure that, that the conversation is handled appropriately. Obviously, they're not my kids, if the parents are fine with it, then, then that's fine too. But I think that, you know, I just want to make sure that they, because there were so many concerns that, you know, that, that we're also sensitive to those concerns too, even though we might not... even though we might not recognize them when we first see them.
Yeah. So, just for more clarification, what sense of like just the fact that there's different colored people represented in the book or what is it? Like just, I just want to be as specific as possible.
Yeah. So, their, their concerns here is mainly about the treatment of the, you know, the necklace scene, you know, and the whipping the people and whatever else there are other concerns or that kind of thing. I just. I spent most of my time on all the other books.
Yes, no worries.
So, I apologize that I didn't have so much time devoted to this book. But I, I think that you sort of answered that, I guess, and if.
So, the extreme violence that takes place isn't covered in the book. There is some things that lead up to the ending of apartheid that we cover in the introduction. There's a lot of civil unrest, but obviously, it is presented to my seventh graders as seventh grade content. It's not, and that's my desire is to try to not to overstep what my job is, right? And so, anything that talks of violence, like terrible things happen. Kids understand pain and they can empathize with others when they see struggle. And so, I try to walk through that in a very age-appropriate manner. And then I bring in, after we've finished the book, my sister-in-law is from South Africa. She grew up in an adult white school, graduated the year before apartheid ended. So, my kids do an interview with her where they ask questions. I interview it and put it on our YouTube channel and all my kids watch it with their interview questions. So, I try to give as many different perspectives on what took place there as possible.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you for doing that. That's, that's really awesome. I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Yes, does this district, do we have a criteria for novels that we want to use as novel sets within the teaching environment? Like, does the book have to be a Newberry or any, I mean, recognition of good quality literature? Is there a reason why we don't have any protocol or expectations for the literature we provide to kids?
We just.
We just pick a book and.
I just never have written it. I mean, I would, I would tell you that if an English teacher is teaching a book, they're looking for a book that either aligns with a theme that they're trying to teach, depending on what, what standards they're targeting. And so, they will look to different genres to, to match those types of themes. We all want quality literature in front of kids, but we haven't ever put out there that it has to be a Caldecott or it has to be a Newberry award winner. Although we have some of those in our.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I am a little concerned with the direction, clean comments are taking. I don't know.
Lynn and I actually talked about perhaps doing this in a, in a Google form so that you only get to see your responses instead of being able to see the responses of others so that you really are just focusing on your own thoughts.
That would probably be very smart.
Lynn asked, yes, since you. When this was sent out, I can't recall the exact date. It was either that Thursday or that Friday. I think it was that Friday, Sunday, I reviewed the comments and I did send out an email to all of those that participated in the supplemental curriculum committee, asking them to refrain from commenting on other people's comments and just giving their own opinion. I did have several people reach out and thank me and/or apologize. So, my hope is that that was enough to, the next time we go around, that we won't have this. This is the first time we've had those kind of comments to the degree that we've had. So, but I did reach out, asking them to refrain from comments.
How complicated would it be if it was sent out in the form of a form so that there was no bias that was being created? Because sometimes you just get amped up on attacking the person that isn't seeing something the same way you're seeing it.
Not difficult. Well, I actually, when I initially saw all those comments, I made a form for this one just because I just wanted to see what that would entail. The issue, it's just not super clean. It would be a spreadsheet and a, you know, Google spreadsheet for you guys. So, it's not the most user-friendly method to bring it back to you, but I could always tweak that as well. But that would not be a hard thing to change.
Could we, we could copy from the Excel spreadsheet into this nice.
We could, right.
So, that we could provide it to the board in the same manner, but we would collect it differently.
So, that would not be a difficult change at all.
Okay. I think that would be more appropriate.
And I have to agree with the, the statements about reviewing reviews. To say that you haven't read the book and that you read reviews, I understand being concerned about what reviews, but that should, that should guide your understanding of other people's perception of the book by reading, you know, Amazon reviews or whatever. But I want to know what our parents and community are getting from the book rather than reviews. So, I ask that if you didn't read the book, don't give me a review on reviews. I can go to Amazon and read reviews.
To kind of beef up our process, when we look at the novel sets, I, we purchased tubs to put all of the books inside there and have them labeled by school. And I'd like to create a list of just how these are. I met with the fifth grade team today and we talked about, we'll make a list of, these are the books that the fifth grade team wants to read. We'll include the johnification that we do with the library books that are currently in the library with a little synopsis and then present that to you. Then that is exactly what will be then transferred to the syllabus so that we're strengthening and having a more robust syllabus specific to that with the idea that if we have somebody that wants to, obviously, they can always opt out. But if there is a request to just remove the book completely, that we go through the challenge process. And those, the library bill did pass. I found out that today. And so, that's going to be part of the requirements. And so, we are actually addressing those in policy this week. And so, if we strengthen our challenging process, and I would just like it to be, if we're gonna, we're talking about removing a book, that we, whoever wants to participate in that committee, but we're really reading the book and then we're bringing to you the recommendation based on those that have read the book. Because I think from the teacher's standpoint, that's their biggest concern is you can pull up a review on this book and you're going to look at the adult version and not necessarily the kid version. And so, sometimes the, sometimes the reviews are accurate, but there's definitely been, our librarians have found books that all the reviews are really positive and then they've spent the time reading the book and they don't feel like it's worthy for kids. There are some, you know, information or content that they're not comfortable with and then vice versa, the reviews are bad and then it's a, it's a good book. So, I think from the teachers, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I think they would prefer that if we're talking about not allowing kids access, that we're definitely reading the books and then giving information based on that. So, that just is time-consuming. Not everybody has time.
Well, how long are parents or the committee given to read these books? I mean, like you send the list out?
They have about, it's probably three weeks. So, I send out, the next round will be the, after a board meeting, so Monday. And sometimes it's Tuesday, just depending on how much I have on my plate that week. I try to send it out. So, I already have the list built for the May of what the requests have been. So, I will send that out on Monday or Tuesday of next week and then they basically have until it gets posted. So, I try to give as much time as I possibly can, but I mean, that's still, you're talking three weeks to read a book. That's not easy.
Well, not when you're putting twelve on the list.
Right.
And so, for one person to have to sit and read twelve to even comment a review on it, I don't think that's realistic. I, I mean, I, I appreciate that, you know, some people are able to do their due diligence. I mean, it's not just Amazon that gives reviews. There's a whole lot of places that can give reviews. And I know there were, I mean, when we get websites, you know, they don't even have a book to look at. So, that's a little challenging and has been all along. So, I don't think we should penalize parents because we're expecting them to read twelve novels in a short window.
No, I'm just saying, if you're gonna comment on a, on a book, comment on that book. If you're not gonna read the book, have, I disagree.
I will, I, just from my perspective, I, we have now, this is the most we've ever had, probably. I think the last time I looked, we have forty-five to forty-seven people that are participating in this curriculum subcommittee. I appreciate all of the feedback and the willingness to participate. I do feel like when we first started this, we did have twelve and fifteen. I mean, it was really lengthy. The last few have been pretty, pretty small.
Right.
And so, it might be a time for us to, especially now with the library bill passing, just really looking at our process. Maybe we do something different with library books outside of supplemental curriculum and so that we are giving people time to actually read the book. And, and maybe we brainstorm another, still allowing parents to have all the input regarding what their, what their kids are reading, still allowing the board to approve that. But maybe there's a different venue or avenue that we go about doing this because that timeline is short and I, I get that.
And it may be beneficial with the layout if administration could make their recommendations on whether or not the book is approved. Because we're making our decision based on the input that we're being given by the committee, but we don't have recommendations by the administration. And I don't mind using the parent input, but the complaint that we seem to hear consistently is that, you know, it seems that it needs to be better, it needs to be, it needs to be improved upon. So, based on that, if administration can give their recommendation, that could help us because then we could ask administration if they're recommending us approve something, but there's been seven complaints about this is not a good book. Why does administration think it's appropriate for our district when the parents are saying no?
Now, I would assume that if you bring this list to it, that you're recommending that it be a good book. If that's not the case, then we need to know. I guess is where I would be. Why would you bring us a book that you weren't confident enough to recommend?
We have set aside some books based on the comments that were provided.
Yes, we have. Yes.
So.
And we could still do that, but we, you know. I think the interesting thing is that we have one or two here this evening where we have people who have read the book, they've actually read the book and see it two different ways. And then, you know, we're kind of left to sort that out. And I hope people appreciate the fact that that is in fact what's happening is sometimes we get something presented to us and people view it in different ways. And we understand that, we respect that, you know, and we just have to make the best judgment we can.
Would you guys be comfortable if Lisa and I come up with a proposal of having a more robust, we can change the form, we can, Lisa can add the recommendations specific to how we garner the input, but coming up with a more robust specific, I mean, we're really just talking about library books and then present that at the May board meeting so that you guys have, we can look at some different options. So that we're still covering all the things that we feel like are important, that parents have a chance to provide input, the board has a chance to approve the curriculum, the teachers have a chance to give the recommendations. And so maybe it's just time to change what we're doing and add a more robust process and system.
Which gives us an opportunity to make, to look at the new bill that's being signed into law to make sure that all of the pieces are there.
I asked for this, I'm, this list, I'm ready to make a motion. Does anyone need to have further discussion?
Is there a motion?
No.
I said I'm ready to make a motion if you guys are done reading. I move to approve the list as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Who in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Three in favor, two opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to job descriptions, we have Safety and Security Systems Director and a Director of School Safety and Security, two new positions that.
That potentially in the future we need as we grow, especially with our security programs. So I'm, right now I'm just asking the board to consider the job descriptions so we can have them in our catalog should, should we get to a point where we feel like we need to move forward. The Safety and Security Systems Director is really somebody who will oversee all of the hardware aspects of our security systems, cameras, beacons, speakers, that are door access points. So that person would be responsible for doing something similar to what Mr. Ferriola does where there's the, the plan for when certain things have to be changed out, end-of-life type maintenance plan. So we have that lined out. We currently have one person who is doing that work, but he's pulled in lots of different directions. And so we don't have, we don't have a great inventory right now of all, all the speakers, when they were installed, when they were updated. And so as we do more security, that's going to become a need for us.
Who has been in charge of the Safety and Security Systems?
Paul Gallion.
Okay.
And he's done an amazing job. We hired him as, his title is Low Voltage Technician. So he, he does have the knowledge and skill to pull low voltage wire and do those kinds of things. So he works a lot with electricity. And he's just kind of taken over the security things because it's a high priority and I need somebody to just focus on that. But, so that's, that's the why for that one. I just really want to make sure that we, we have a good understanding of our inventory and the lifespan of each piece of equipment and that somebody's paying attention to that. And then the Director of School Safety and Security, and we've talked about this several times, but with just Glenn and me basically handling all of the things at the district level, Kelsey's doing all things federal programs, so she's running constantly with that. I'm not able to give the level of attention to our security program that I did as an Assistant Superintendent when we had five administrators in the building. And I really want to see this program thrive. And so at some point, when it's, the budget allows for it, we're big enough and have enough going on that we need somebody really.
This person supervises our security people?
Yep, our guards, our SROs. The other nice thing about having this person would be if one of our armed district safety specialists is out sick, this person could go and actually be in that building that day. Right now, if they're out sick, we don't have coverage.
So they would, they would need to have some of the same training and preparation.
Yeah. Yep. There's also a need for some consistent training of our, our staff across the district because we have different people in different buildings. There's, everybody's kind of training a little bit differently. I'd like to see more consistency with that.
With respect to how to handle incidents?
And really doing scenario-based incidents, not always active shooter type. We do lots and lots of them, but, and really helping staff and students to think through, like, we're gonna do a fire drill and I'm gonna put a piece of butcher paper over this door that you normally go out and I want to see how you process that because there's a fire right there. So you can't go there. So to teach people to think on their feet. And so there's that component to it, which I think is really important. And then just the organization of all of the weapons, the cam, the deer, their training, their qualifications. It, it is a lot of, there's a lot of work. That probably could be done better at this point.
I might get the qualifications, the second one, five years successful experience. Is that person out there?
Been a couple.
Yeah, I would say that there's probably quite a few, maybe not in our state, but with everybody coming in. I mean, it's, it's a pretty common position for most public school districts in the U.S., the bigger, bigger school districts anyways. My other question would be is why we're, why aren't all those things included in the inventory with the rest of the technology things?
It's a good question. And I don't, I guess I didn't look, I don't think it is because I think the technology was just Chromebooks. So, and I'm sure that Paul has, well, I know he has because he's got a map of every school and, and there's, he's got dots on the map to show where all the speakers are. I just don't know if it's on a spreadsheet, you know, all in one place.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, he could tell you by building.
Right.
Where things are. But then the other part of not having the spreadsheet, just because of a lack of time for him, I would like to know, like, on, when were the speakers installed? What is their lifespan? So what's the plan? So we just kind of know there's a rotation of.
Yeah, that should all be in the inventory. I asked that question before and I thought, I was told before from, that, that we did have that. So.
Yeah, we definitely do for laptops, Chromebooks and things. And I'm, I, Paul may have that. I haven't ever seen it. So I just know he's running with his hair on fire all the time.
Sure.
And he's getting pulled. So right now, I've asked him to have his priority be what the board approved for us, which was more cameras and our access points. And so he's frantically doing that, but he's getting pulled away when a projector in the classroom doesn't work. He's the one that goes in and fixes it. And because it's in the classroom and the teacher needs it, he'll stop what he's doing and he's running to that. So he is, it's taking him longer than he would like for it to.
Do you have a timeline of when you want to hire for these positions?
I'm, I'm not, I would rather wait until we have the budget workshop and we have a better handle on what our finances look like before we talk about adding new positions. I'm just trying to be proactive in having this part ready to go should we get to the point where we feel like it's the right.
Yeah, I think in the past, I think, at least I was taken off guard that we approved a job description and then all of a sudden somebody was hired and we, we had never approved a budget for that person to even be hired. So I am super apprehensive to approve any job descriptions if we are just saying that, well, when we have budget, we'll do it. I would like to see a personnel schedule created district-wide.
What does that look like? When you say that?
All of the approved, appropriated personnel. So this school has this many administrators, this, this school has this many administrative assistants, this, these teachers are.
Is that different than the spreadsheet that Brooke gave you?
It's the same thing I asked for. Yeah, because that spreadsheet that she gave us was all the employees and how much they're paid and, and what positions they have. No, it's position. It has nothing to do with a person. It's position-specific and it's only positioned by each school, by each department. So, so that we know exactly what our costs look like personnel-wise. Because we keep hearing that personnel is 80% of our budget, but we don't know what personnel we have.
And I do appreciate what Brooke gave us and all of the information on it. It's what we have been asking for. The unfortunate thing is, is the way it was set up, you can't exactly sort it. So you, I, I went through and made each little tablet page and, I mean, we shouldn't have to do that much work. It should be in a format that we can manipulate. So it's, it is challenging when, you know, you guys are doing a lot of hard work and you give us something. And it's still hard to work with.
I think trustee Bing, I put, that's why I put right on my, because I knew that you were frustrated previously by some of that, which is why I put right on my agenda item that this is not a position I'm posting at this time. And I would, I would bring to you, and I think I've done that every time, I would bring to the board a request for approval to post a position before I would post it. So. Unless we have a vacated, if it's a new position, I guess, if we're adding a new position.
My thought is I don't think that both of these need to be directors. I think we can have a Director of School Safety and Security and they could have somebody that would be responsible for the safety systems. I don't think that they both need to be director-level positions.
And I, I guess I wasn't even thinking about like levels. So I will fix that.
Well, it's a little challenging. We don't know what they're, where they're gonna fall on the pay scale as well. Maybe putting categories of where they're gonna sit on the pay scale if we're not willing to divulge what we're willing to pay because that fluctuates annually. If we could at least know what column they're gonna fit in.
Okay.
So I would move to table this until we have a little bit further information. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the school calendars, we have a draft for the 24-25 school year and the 25-26 school year. Do you need to have any discussion or conversations on calendars?
Yeah, one year at a time, that two-year at a time thing really bit us in the butt.
Okay.
I don't want to do two years at a time. We do need to get one year down.
Yeah, it's a little challenging when we have to make corrections.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. Thoughts, Bob?
So we're gonna adopt 24-25?
You can make a move for that if you want.
Before we. Before we do that, can I just, there are a couple of things I just want to make sure that I point out so that we're all on the same page. Because there are a couple of changes from what we typically do. And we have talked about this, but we, rather than taking our curriculum day in October, when we, we have historically done that, we are going to take our curriculum day on the date of the general election so that kids are not in school that day and teachers will be participating in professional development or curriculum. So it's a teacher contract day, but not a student day. So that is a little bit of a change. We, we had intended to bring this to you in March, but we have heard at the state level that Superintendent Kritchfield is looking to make some, just some changes to either instructional minutes or the minimum number of teacher contract days. And she still has, we have not heard that yet. And Brooke needs to be able to start crunching numbers. So I don't anticipate that we'll have to make some changes because I feel like we've got a lot of instructional time in our calendar. But I don't know what changes she's thinking she's going to make. So if, if she adds a lot of time, we may have to come back and add time.
This calendar, at the very bottom, shows 172 days of student contact time, 190 day contract. So there are a full 18 days that teachers are doing something other than meeting students. Correct?
Well, some of that is also within the teacher's 190, are the holidays also.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what the state superintendent comes up with. That may alter this.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
So maybe we shouldn't have adopted this one. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree with you and, and that's why we waited one more month. I'm not sure that the state superintendent is, is gonna make that decision. They're out doing the post-legislative roadshow now. Brooke has to have all of our minutes and things to the State Department by May 31st. And so we may not have any more information by the May board date. We can wait till the May board date, but we may be in the same boat because I don't know when we're gonna hear from her.
Although if the state superintendent's doing the legislative roadshow, I mean, there could be an opportunity to just ask a question. Are you gonna be making changes?
Well, she's already said that she's going to. We just don't know what we are.
Well, maybe we could clarify our question. Say, when are you going to be making the changes?
So we can, we can wait and we can bring it back in May. If that's what you want us to do, we certainly can do that.
Well, and it's fair of her to know that it's, creates a type of problem, you know, at the district level to not have that information and yet have to be reporting to the state by the end of May. I assume she understands and appreciates that. Reminder might not hurt.
And it may come up at the roadshow. We are getting a lot of parent calls to the district office wanting to know when we're posting our calendar because they are anxiously awaiting spring break, Christmas vacation and those kinds of things. So we will just, I, we did have notice up on the website that it's pending board approval, so.
If the, if the state su, changes the number of hours, which might change the number of student contact days, doesn't alter the contract time. And so what we would be forced to do is to maybe eliminate one of the teacher workdays or something like that.
Yeah, we, we would look.
We wouldn't alter the calendar otherwise probably.
Correct. Correct.
So maybe we could go ahead then on that notion.
There would just potentially be one more student contact day in the calendar in place of something else. But we have that no, the non-contract day in May right now due to shortage of guest teachers during spring sports state, which we could put back in very easily and that would take care of that. I don't anticipate a big change, but I do, I just don't know for sure what that's going to do.
I move without the twenty-four, twenty-five.
A second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? Trustee Grissom, when you said it gets confusing only due to calendars.
Well, it wasn't confusing, it was too much hassle. Because we had to keep coming back and it created a lot of problems, yeah, and we only did it because Coralene and Post Falls did that. And so we were trying to keep up with them, but it was just too much for us in this district, you know.
So you, so moving forward, we'll, so next year we will adopt, I just wanted to make sure.
We should go back to the once a year, because it was something that was just recently under the prior administration, it was.
And that makes our jobs a little bit easier.
Well, and it was only.
The work that was done, yeah.
Well, it's that, so we.
Yeah, you're done for next year, right?
Exactly. Moving on to the organizational chart.
This is updated with our new clerk and Rebecca did an amazing job at putting the chart together a little bit differently, so it's a little more pleasing to the eye, not so many colors all over the place. A little bit more linear. So we are open to feedback if there's something you feel like we're missing or something doesn't seem right.
Any discussion on the organizational chart?
Looks fine to me.
Nope, looks good, I move to approve. Before I call for a vote, Bob looks like he's really focused on it, can I call for a vote? We had a motion to approve.
Did you make that motion?
No.
You ready to vote?
Are you, are you ready to vote or do we need to have discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the summer base rates. All right, open up the floor for discussion. I do have a question on these rates. What's going to be the end, I mean, what's going to be the end budget, is it going to be cost neutral, is it really?
We're anticipating it to be cost neutral, yes. The plan. I have summer base down below, but the plan is to enroll a hundred children over the course of summer. We've been working diligently to ensure that we have staffing and I am pleased to say that I think we have plenty of staffing to run the program this summer, so with that, I'd like to have the rates approved so that we can start the enrollment process.
Didn't we increase the rates last year? What, why are we, why have we skipped?
We didn't have summer base last summer.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. We did increase the base rates.
Yes.
The base rates, just not the summer.
That's why these are coming to be separated.
Do we know if we have enough staff for summer base?
I've been diligently working on it.
We do have enough staff as of this morning.
Do we have reserved staff?
I have, I have said that we have.
I didn't want to start a program and then have to cancel.
Believe me, that was the conversation I had last week, that I, an email went out on Monday to say that we were so short a couple of people and if we didn't have applicants and interviews by this Friday, that we would have to not run the program and we received probably four or five more applications after that email went out, so there's definitely interest. We do have people that are willing to sub if somebody is out. One of the questions that we did ask, what are your planned vacations? Because we really would like people to be consistent with the program. We were able to accommodate most of the scheduled requests, some people wanted to work every day but Tuesday and we were able to accommodate all of that, so. I feel fairly confident that we have a good crew that are in it for the right reasons and really are looking forward to running the program this summer.
How many hours a day is it talking?
Drop off will start at six-thirty, it'll run until six, so we will have base staff from six in the morning until about six-thirty at night.
Any other discussion?
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, moving down to the RFP for the John Brown sighting project and the RFP for concrete projects, they're two separate line items, but I think they need to be discussed at the same time. My concern when it was, when I saw them on the agenda was that the board hasn't even made the determination that we're doing the sighting at John Brown, nor have we made a determination on how much concrete we're doing. If we're able to do concrete, which I'm very passionate about, that we get the concrete fixed at the last school. But what I'm being told is that we need to start this process, but it doesn't mean that we're doing it, so.
It's going off the bids.
Right, right, and if the bids come back and we, there's no way that we can afford it, then.
As we discussed at, I started Jessica, I'm CFO, as we discussed at the budget workshop in March, I had planned to bring both of these before you so that we could start the process to see that if it was in the budget, like you said, I have an option within the RFP for the construction management general contractor to also potentially let the district office, because the buildings are right next door to each other. Hopefully we would have some savings to do with the sighting at both locations and windows at both locations, since they're right next to each other.
But those would be two separate projects, not joined together.
Correct, yes, but I'm hoping that whoever bids on one will bid the other and give us a good deal. Pollyanna, say. And then again with the the concrete, I know we're kind of late in the game for concrete this summer. We might be able to bid out specific ones at the board's discretion, but just looking to be able to start that process if that's the board's desire.
I would move to approve moving forward. Both the sighting project and the concrete project. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. You're welcome.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting and move the remainder of the items on the agenda to next month.
Do we have a second on that?
I just need the summer food service program and activity buses.
I was gonna say, can we finish the consent agenda or? And I just moved. With a new business action items. Trustee Grissom?
Well, I mean, if there's no second, it fails.
This is true.
Figured we always hear complaints about how long the meeting is, so.
Yes, we do.
I gave everybody the opportunity, don't, nobody complained.
I appreciate that, well, and I'll remember the future.
Yeah. All right, motion fails. Moving on to the summer food service program.
Jessica, I'm CFO.
Kevin, Food Service Director.
Plan to run the summer food service program in conjunction with the base program on June seventeen through August sixteen. We also plan to operate so a traditional congregant site like we do every year or every summer, like in middle school. It'll be a longer duration this summer. We are also completing our application to operate two non-congregate meal sites at rural locations, Apple Elementary and Timberlake High School. The non-congregate meal sites allows us to hand out pre-bagged breakfasts and lunches during morning, morning pickup windows, like a half an hour window, kind of like we did during COVID. And we can also hand out meals at the end of the week for weekend consumption, so we'll be able to take care of those areas in the summer, unlike we haven't been able to in the past. So we're seeking permission to move forward with that with our application. We do feel that would serve our northern schools during the summer.
Just for a point of clarification, have non-congregate meals at Apple Elementary and Timberlake High School? The student has to be present in order to get the bag, or can parents just swing by and pick up three for kids at home?
We have to have sort of a policy in place, but they can come by and pick up for their own kids.
They can't pick up for, I mean, worse, if they can pick up for their own kids. Summer food service program is free to all children ages one through eighteen, adults could purchase a meal if they so wished, but it's a great benefit to the children in our district and our community, so. Our application, we have to get it in fairly soon.
Soon, next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks, so I'm just seeking permission to move forward with the planned proposal.
And it's revenue neutral to the district?
Yes, so assuming this question was brought up at the last meeting, so if we do somewhere between seventy and eighty, breakfast and ninety and a hundred lunches, we should be fine.
Which, with the non.
Especially being able to hand out three days worth of meals, huh?
That makes a huge difference.
It makes a huge difference, plus we do have a wrestling camp that consumes quite a large amount of meals during the course of a week. But that also helps.
Well, and doing, you know, having the meals up at Timberlake High School will also, you know, with the kiddos. Some camps and stuff, the summer school kids.
That allows us to help out with that. This is a new thing that the state department has been able to.
So you can do the two different types of meals?
Yep.
I would move to approve. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the activity buses.
As we discussed, Jessica, I'm CFO, sorry, I feel super negative. As we discussed at the budget workshop in March, the money that was originally set aside for the three activity buses was repurposed for curriculum, we had a deadline to spend our S R dollars. These buses weren't coming in, so the money was repurposed for curriculum, so now we're stuck kind of trying to determine where to pay for these from. We did receive clarification from the state that we, these buses are not considered part of the transportation fleet and will not be eligible for reimbursement. We're not allowed to use bus depreciation funds, which is what we typically use for transportation bus purposes. Maintenance must be completed separate from transportation maintenance, so I did confirm all of that. Our maintenance personnel can work on them, we just have to charge their time to a separate budget for it, they can't, cannot be charged to transportation. So I've given you some options. We can, option one, pay for them out of general fund balance, which we all know is not our favorite option. Option two, pay for the buses out of the board approved projects fund. If we chose this option, we wouldn't have enough funds in there for any change orders on the Apple Elementary or Spirit Lake Elementary sighting projects.
Including the hundred thousand that we already know that we have to do.
Yep, so that would definitely put us in the red there. Option three, pay for the buses out of the FY twenty-four plant facility levy. Or option four, we can cancel the order and incur a fifteen hundred dollar cancellation fee. I do know that Jessica, Dinner, our Transportation Director, spoke with our sales rep at Harlow's. They're not getting a lot of information from the company that manufactures the bus. The last that we heard was, it was in February that it was going to be March and in March, when she recently just followed up, is we just don't have a timeline yet, so that's also of concern. We are still getting the buses at a very economical rate compared to what you would purchase these are at now. They're still honoring the rate that we contracted with them for.
Until they come in.
But if we don't get them. So I guess we have to kind of make a decision as to where we're going to pull the funds for these from so that we can make other budget decisions. I know our athletic directors would be very disappointed if we did not move forward with the purchase.
Correct.
Yeah, but as time goes on, the money has to keep getting shifted because it just keeps getting delayed and delayed and delayed.
Right.
I mean, that's how we ended up here to begin with, so if they don't have a timeline, I mean, how are we going to know and then, given what you said, until they come in, then we get a P O this.
Yeah, they want more.
Who knows how much more than what they originally told us.
They have a P O for the exact amount that is listed here and we had to reissue because you'd be closed P Os. Last fiscal year had to redo a P O this year, so it was reissued, they have, they've continued to accept that, that price and have made a commitment to accept that price. I recognize that they can change their mind at any time, but they have made the commitment to honor the price.
Did we get a purchase fund on this?
No. As we talked about with the recent RFP that we did for regular transportation buses, they're not really doing them just because of this issue. They would have to pay it every time.
What's your recommendation?
I don't know, it's a hard one. We're going, we're coming up on two years that we put this P O in and we still have no timelines. I'm definitely not in favor of using fund balance. We can use plant facility levy dollars if that's what the board chooses, but there's, I don't know, there's just no, we could be another three years waiting on these things, we just don't know.
I think we owe it to our buildings to use plant facility levy dollars for building maintenance for this, for what we have. Well, and I don't understand why we would have to pay a fifteen hundred dollar cancellation fee if they can't produce the product.
I've argued that with them at this point, but I thought it's just their sticking point is we put the order in, they've got the order going, it's five hundred dollars per bus. It's just like if you were to cancel a custom order anywhere else, there's a fee, a penalty. I know, I agree, believe me, I've, I've talked in circles on this one.
What would they do if you didn't pay it?
I mean, they could send us tick elections, maybe, I don't know, not bid on future bus products. I mean, there's not very many vendors that do transportation fleet.
What bus company that bid us and we had to pay more?
The, the one that we just contracted with for our transportation fleet buses for this year. Not Harlow's.
Would it be helpful if we reached out to our attorney to see if there's a letter sheet of draft on already? Would it be helpful if we reached out to our attorney to see if there's a letter sheet of draft on already have to help us not pay the fifteen hundred dollar fee for canceling an order that's been two years?
I think we just cancel at a better price, that's.
That's the problem.
Yeah. Right, if we cancel, then I think we're saying we're not, we're not, uh, going down this path.
When we bid out used buses, um, last fall, used buses were a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, and we're getting brand new ones for about seventy something, so.
Right, yeah, so if we, if we want, I guess that's the question, is if, and it, this will help us a lot with costs down the road, just not taking a yellow bus or a charter bus for a team of seven.
Right.
So there is definitely cost savings for the district. Um, it's just a, um, a matter of staying in it for the long haul.
I'd like to commend the FCC LA group that just went down to FCC LA for, we have Bonners Ferry on the bus, we have Lakeland on the bus, we have Timberlake on the bus, Golds is on the bus charter, who else?
They, they are doing a really good job of bombing a ride with other people or putting everybody in one, just to cut the cost down. Every district in North Idaho is frustrated with the amount of buses we have to send out for state.
Be nice if the state did a rotating schedule, or they maybe came up here every other year, but.
Right.
Let me see, we don't have the.
We don't have the facilities.
We do.
Convenient that they built all the facilities down there.
It'd be nice to sleep in a bed.
So if we want to stay in it for the long haul, then I guess we have to decide if we want to use fund balance, which I would rather not do, um.
I, I, you know, I appreciate Randy's comment about facilities levy, but I, I personally think that's the direction we need to go.
Um, can I add a comment to this? Um, with the, the facilities bill did pass, um, I'm hoping the governor signed it today, um, there was a trailer bill with it, but we will be receiving plant facility levy dollars that we're levying next year. So we'll also be receiving about one point two million dollars from the state, actually eight hundred thousand, because, you know, they took away the lottery money, but that's a whole other conversation. Um, but so we'll have a little bit extra plant facility levy money next year. My recommendation is that we take it out of the FYI twenty-four plant facility levy. If we don't hear anything by Christmas, I think we work on canceling the order. I, I think we do need to put kind of a timeline on this, um, so that we have time to use that.
At least get updates.
Right.
Yeah, give, yeah, give them kind of a, hey, we need buses by this date.
Yep, so I just.
You need to honor.
I do think we need to put kind of an end date to it, so that we're not waiting and carrying this money forward. It can obviously be used in many other areas in our district, um, but I don't also want to pass up on the deal if we can maybe give them.
Completely make it happen, yeah.
Yeah, so that's my recommendation, is I would like to try to take it out of plant facility levy money, so give them a kind of a deadline of when we need to have them delivered by, and see if we can get any traction.
I move, we move forward with option three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Three in favor, two opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the handbooks.
I'll get a call.
Yes.
I mean, you did find our curriculum.
Yes, you did.
Right?
Yes, you did.
He's, and he's persistent.
He is.
I'm every day.
Moving on to the handbooks for classified staff, um, and the coach's handbook. Which, I guess the, the coach's handbook isn't a coach's handbook, it's a parent layer handbook.
Okay, I might, I was like, I thought that would be my.
I feel like that's already been approved.
Yeah, we just, um, are going through all, all of the handbooks that we have, and we bring you a few each, each month, so that they're all before you, and you approve all of them, and then you'll, you'll have a sense of, um, all of the handbooks that we have in the district. We're currently working on the certified staff handbook.
Could you update the classified, please? The Board of Trustees' information is incorrect, the Board Clerk is incorrect, yeah.
So that, yeah, those will be updated this summer.
That's kind of what I figured for the, the school year.
We just, at one of our workshops, um, we had mentioned one of these handbooks, and the board had said we've not seen that, so we, we thought we would bring them forward, just so you're aware of them, and then, um, over the course of the summer, all of them will come to refer the annual updates and approval.
So these aren't for our approval then, they're just in FYI, I mean, they're. Yeah, these should probably just been discussion items.
Yeah.
Okay. I would move to.
Good question.
Remove it from the action item. Yeah, they don't, whatever, okay.
You have a question about these handbooks, uh. So we have kids that play sports, that, they're, they don't give great reports like normal kids. So we actually had a kid that was so far behind that he probably couldn't catch up.
Okay.
Because he went to Bridge or something, Bridge Academy, because they don't give, they don't give reports like a normal teacher at the school. So the whole year goes by, and then this kid's not, uh, eligible, because he hasn't done any of his work.
Was he, was he dual enrolled at Lakeland?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was kind of weird to me.
That is an interesting.
Because like if you're homeschooling kids, their, their parents get the grade report, right?
Yeah.
But it doesn't seem like Bridge is.
Yeah, and I don't know what the arrangement is if Bridge would share the grades with the different.
That'd mean.
Yeah, but it seems like the parents should be able to sign a release of information between the two schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I just think it would clear up some, you know. Like, you, well, I don't have any grades to show you, you know, and then districts comes up and they're ineligible, because they haven't got any grade reports all year, so.
Is it specific to that one school that we have that issue?
I don't know, I did, it's just something I experienced this year, and I've never seen it before, so.
I will take it.
What does, uh, what's it called about there in the Purdy? K-Tech, they, they send angry reports?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're not, that's not considered a dual enrollment, that's our, just.
Our, yeah.
So we're gonna have to table, we're just gonna take any action, or do you want to table? Or do you care? Because it's an action item, I don't know. We'll just, I would move to take no action. Okay. All right. We have a motion, do we have a second? No, it dies, so we're done, there we go.
No action.
How do you make that fit?
Just no, no second, so it dies, so we're done.
Oh, okay.
Okie dokie. Moving on to discussion items, um, IDB meeting procedures.
You had asked me to reach out, or, and then you reached out to, um, Megan about how to post for IDB meetings, because we weren't, we were not doing it correctly. So this was just, um.
No, I know, um, the meeting needs to be treated just like any board meeting, needs to be posted through Board Book, it needs to be, um, noticed of. The agenda doesn't have to be anything convoluted or complicated, it can just say discussion items, negotiations, um, and then minutes do need to be taken of the meeting. If you want to call them notes, that's fine, but they need to be processed through as minutes, and then if anything is created or, um, done within there, then we just attach them to the meeting minutes. And I do think that by posting it as a meeting, it, then, we don't have to do a quorum notice, because if all board members want to show, then all board members can come. Um, so, yeah, that's, we do need to go back, I did go back through Board Book, it looks like in twenty twenty-two, we were posting the meetings, um, we did not do it in twenty twenty-three, so, um. And I didn't know about that at all, it was just brought to my attention, because there was some confusion, and we needed to get the air cleared, so I just called legal counsel.
Moving forward, that's how we would do it. So since note, or since minutes need to be taken, does that mean the clerk has to be there, or, um?
Well, do we want to have the clerk there?
I just hate to have a meeting here, sorry, sorry, Maria.
I'm, I'm asking. Bob's shaking his head no. Dave's rocking yes.
I don't think so, I don't know.
I think it can be treated like a subcommittee meeting.
I'm gonna kick down the meeting.
As long as somebody's, as long as somebody's taking notes.
Rebecca takes her notes, of course.
You're an invited guest.
Yeah, ridiculous.
I mean, they're recorded, just like everything, we got notes, the documents being, I don't think she needs to make another meeting. And that's, I think it's fine.
But you will need to make sure that it's posted.
Yes.
That's all. We don't need to do a quorum notice, because it's posted as, um, a meeting. Well, actually, though, if you're treating it like a subcommittee meeting, then there would need to have a quorum notice.
Just that for, um, policy.
Okay, so, yeah, then we'll just do the posting and a quorum notice, perfect.
So.
Just in the off chance.
Yeah, just, um, because of the way we run IDB, uh, and this is typical in every district, you have a set number of people for the district side, you have a set number of people for the teacher side, um, of the team, so that it's an equal number. So if more than the two board members who are participating come, um, they wouldn't be part of the team, so, I, it, because it's open and people get to watch, but.
So you can come and watch, but you just wouldn't.
Right.
The board members can come.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I just want to make sure that, that, I just, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody was kind of aware of that.
So then that concept, it's not a subcommittee.
Right, right. And it's actually not written anywhere, and that's not a legal thing, that's a.
This is what we've agreed on.
Well, I don't, I've never agreed to any of it, so I don't know who agreed to it, but it's not, I mean, it is technically a meeting of the board, right, by law, so I, I understand the whole camaraderie of the thing, but.
Is that a quorum, though, to make your decisions?
No, we have a quorum be, because, um, three or more board members are in.
I know, but doesn't it, doesn't it define it as doing business or, you know?
Not for the quorum, it's just.
It says that three of you, more than two are going to show up possibly.
Yeah, then we just post the quorum notice, meaning that there might be more than, there might be three or more of us. A quorum notice says there might be three people, but no action, no board business will happen, that's what it is. It's acknowledging that there are three board members in one place at the same time, and that no board business will be done, right.
If we go to lunch together, she has to post it.
If three of us.
Only if three of us are.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
But if two of you go and I see you, then we just, I just roll, we're somewhere else. It's like if all of us are at a football game.
Right.
We just go.
We stand opposite sides of the fields.
We love David.
We could just get those we're on clothes signs on, so no business for clothes.
Okay, summer base, yes, moving on to summer base. Um, who are you? I'm kidding.
Jessica, CFO, um, I've given you a chunk of this information already, um, we did survey, um, parents, uh, and staff in the district, sorry. We had a hundred and one respondents as of last Friday, ninety-five percent of the respondents would be interested in signing children up for base, I'm on the wrong one, oh, um, I've got too many, summer base ones, there we go, hundred and one respondents for summer base, um, ninety-five would be signing up for the school year. Am I reading, I have the same, I don't know, doing a great job.
Okay, well, you have a hundred and one respondents.
Yep.
As a four five, seventy-one percent of the respondents are interested in signing children up for summer base at John Brown, and forty pers, forty-two percent would need five days a week for care.
Yep, so, um, at that point, I told you we were working on, um, opening it, we do have enough staffing to do it, enrollment would be capped at a hundred, limited to incoming first grade students through recently graduated fifth grade students. Breakfast and lunch would be available via the summer food service program, um, at Lakeland Middle School, and we do have enough staff to run the program.
Okay, so we're just doing first through fifth grade?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, technically, it's, yeah.
Going into sixth grade?
Going into sixth grade, so it's, it's, it's all of our graduating kinders through graduating fifth graders that would be eligible, so, just not incoming kinders.
Okay, got it. Too little.
And no history.
No.
Yeah, so, um, would like to open registration, uh, by the end of April. FYI.
Um, I don't know if you're aware, this is not an action item.
Yeah, it's just an informational item.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much for the information.
Yep. So now the other one I was trying to tell you about.
The twenty-three, twenty-four base school year.
It should be twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, great.
So again, we had a, a lot of respondents to it, um, majority were at John Brown, Garwood, Twin Lakes and Apple Elementary, we currently do not have a location at Twin Lakes. Um, I'm hoping to, if we have enough staffing, um, if we are able to maybe call some of the staffing from the summer, um, to be a coordinator to open a site at Twin Lakes next school year. Um, that would be an action item as we get into the summer, um, and consider it as part of the budget, I just, FYI.
So we would be opening up John Brown, Garwood, and then adding Twin?
We, we currently operate at John Brown, Garwood and Apple, um, I would like to propose to potentially open Twin if we can get the appropriate staffing.
So then we would have four bases?
And we would have four. Almost all the way back up. And then I'll bring the base rates for next year as part of the budget here in, in June.
Okay.
So just FYI.
Thank you, thank you. Any other conversation on that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome.
Um, moving on to a discussion on innovative classrooms.
So there's a law on the books that says if a group of parents of twenty-four kids come together and, uh, put forth a proposal to the school board, um, to, to create an innovation classroom, the law used to say that the board shall allow it, it now says may. Um, so we do have a little bit of latitude to consider, um, and there are pieces in the law, the teacher has to be our teacher, um, uh, as part of the proposal, they have to let us know if they're going to access our transportation. Um, uh, we have to provide the materials. Um, I had a couple of questions, so I reached out to Megan, um. My, my biggest concern was, is this going to be something similar to the facilities use, where if you do for one, you have to do for all? Because we might like the concepts that. Because we might like the concepts that come forth initially and then something comes out of left field and it's different than kind of our community norms and our values. Do we have the ability to say no? And while she said yes, she also was, it wasn't crystal clear because there's, there was definitely the language in there about the discriminatory, being discriminatory that simply because we don't want a particular type of classroom because it doesn't align with our values. And we say yes to the ones that do. We could be opening ourselves up for a potential discrimination lawsuit. My biggest concern, and I shared this with the group, that there is a group that's working on this right now. My biggest concern is we've worked, especially with this board, so hard to create consistency across the school district so that our education isn't dependent on our zip code. And if we start having lots of these types of classrooms, you study, we suddenly have within our schools, a classroom over which we have no control and, and it's that we are going to, we'll lose the consistency. So that is a concern that I have. But I just, I'm bringing it to you so you have a little bit of information because I do think that there, you're going to see a proposal at some time from a group in the community. And I just wanted you to have the information. If there are additional questions that you have that I need to ask Megan, I tried to ask the ones that I thought of, but just to have some answers before we get down that road. So, just an FYI.
So these would be kids who are currently enrolled and the teacher would have to be employee of the school district. But somebody else would be dictating the curriculum.
Those 24 parents.
But they don't have to be a teacher. The law doesn't state that it has to be a teacher in our district. It just has to be a certified teacher.
It does actually say that.
Certified teacher or teachers. Certified teacher. In a school district.
And, but then it also says that it becomes our, we're responsible for that teacher.
So certified teacher, teachers.
Or parents who child or children attend the school district.
Well, it's saying the group has to include the teacher and the parents. That's not that, that the parents aren't teaching.
Yeah, such person or group must include a certified teacher or teachers in a school district or a parent or parents whose child or children attend school in a school district.
All right, so if you look at five, it says for purposes of.
In school district.
For purposes of compensation, any teacher or other certificate staff member working in an innovation classroom will be an employee of the school district and will be entitled to receive or participate in the public employee retirement system of Idaho, federal social security, unemployment insurance.
But it doesn't say who's responsible for paying that person? It just says that they would, they would be considered.
We, there is language in here that says, it was, it was strange because we are required to pay. Let me find it. Lynn and I were looking at it. Nope. So when they changed it from shall to may, they must have taken that out because it did say that we were required to pay for all of their mandatory benefits. But it didn't say anything about compensation. But I don't, I, what I don't understand is if it's an employee of our school district, who's paying them if they're an employee?
It doesn't have to be though. That's what I'm saying is they don't have to be an employee of the school district.
It says they will be an employee of the school district.
Yeah, that's the language.
Where's, where's number five?
But it does look like we're going to be funded because it states in six, students enrolled in the innovative innovation classroom will be enrolled in the school district for the purpose of calculating educational support program funds apportioned to the school district. So we'll receive funding for them being here in an innovative classroom.
Right, so they're going to be our teacher, which means our administrator is required to go in and do their observation because we are going to have to, that has to be done. And then it says, interesting though, that 100% of the kids in that classroom must take the state assessments. So there is no opting out for that. We get to decide whether or not we want to include them in our account for our proficiency rates for accountability at the state. There just are some sticky things, I guess, so I wanted you to have access to this.
Okay.
And we're not responsible for services except those services described in the agreement. So if, if, right now they're thinking about doing this classroom in Apple. So if they've got, of the 24, some of the kids are Betty Keefer kids and they want us to bus all those kids up to Apple. I mean, that's.
Give me a break.
That, those, these are the kinds of things that might be coming our way. So I just wanted you to be prepared.
Well, and there's nothing in here that says the kids have to be all the same age or the same grade. I mean, they could be sort of across your four grade levels.
Yep, and then we don't get to control anything that happens in the classroom. So we don't get to.
You have to go in and evaluate and do their observation.
We don't get to approve their curriculum. So you have a classroom that doesn't have to abide by any of the rest of our rules. Huh?
I'm glad it says may.
Yeah, it didn't initially, it said shall. So. But in theory, I know they're trying to get creative and out of the box, but there just are some things that are going to be challenging.
Well, it does state that even though the district may not be able to control the curriculum, the parents that are involved have to sign off on the curriculum. So it does place it back in their hands.
But then you're kind of, I mean, that's if, that's okay if they're aligned with how we want to do things. But it becomes very different.
I agree. But I guess the burden does fall on the school district to determine if the alternative curriculum meets the state standards. And if it doesn't, then you need to, the district needs to recommend ways to supplement so that the standard.
Add more work because our own curriculum isn't.
I don't understand what the concept is. Like I don't, I don't know if.
It's like creating a little private school classroom within a public school building.
Little charter.
I mean, if they're saying, okay, you have to have math, history, English, language arts or science. Yeah, okay.
Well, it's just a classroom and I think it may only be just one topic. I don't think it's an eight to three.
Right, right, but I don't know.
Because we haven't had any applications, so until we get one, we don't know what we don't know.
I mean, I could see it for some, something we don't do, computer science or some kind of higher math or something like that. But I'm just trying to think of what.
This group is saying, this is a self-contained classroom. The one that has been talking about this will be a self-contained classroom. They'll be with that teacher all day long and they're going to use their own curriculum in our building. And this board has really no oversight. It's the, the parents become the board in that classroom. The 24 parents.
And how many of these classrooms can we create?
Right.
I mean, they just come in, what if we don't have room? I mean, where, where are they going to be?
That's why it says may.
Go to Garwood, they can go into a closet because that's where some of our kids are going to be.
Yeah, now I'm so curious what this is.
They, yeah, they've been diligently working on it, so.
Who's responsible for discipline?
It's hard because what is clarified in there is, does this classroom have to abide by district policy? Or like, are they operating outside of that? There's, it doesn't talk about that.
Right.
So is this alternative medicine class? I mean, what's going on?
Those are all valid questions. I would recommend you reach out to legal counsel, be it Amy White or Megan, and ask what type of policy they could draft to sort of govern that, an innovative classroom. As far as what boundaries can, is the district allowed to place on that type of an environment? I mean, because somewhere, somehow, someone's creating a policy for this. So if we start looking at it now, then we do get, we can make sure every, everyone's eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed.
Yep. Ask some question. Just an interesting concept.
Average class size in the school.
School, what they're a school.
We have an update on the social studies adoption.
Ashley, Ashley printed it. We actually met on Monday. I put their initial recommendation from last month at the very bottom. Kind of just broke up in teams. There are not a lot of notes because I just, one of the teachers in each kind of grade band really have a lot of discussion with the parents that participated. K8 pretty unanimously at the last meeting and then they were going to go back and talk to their counterparts, but all of them came back just feeling like, I, we've looked at, I think, seven different programs, six or seven, and they're just not really robust or they just feel like the content is not great. It's more of the same and feeling like this is a lot of money to spend for not high quality. High school came back. One of the things that middle school did say is like in one grade level, and I'm probably going to get these wrong, but like in sixth grade, it was really aligned to standards, but in seventh grade it wasn't. And so just feeling like it just, you know, it's not, it's not great. High school really wanted to spend time looking at, they would love to have one book that covers all the histories and then have an econ and a government book. And so looking at different programs and really thoroughly looking at it with alignment to standards. So they asked if they could, I reached out to all of the companies and said, can you give me everything so that they can really just sit down and look at the alignment piece before they even think about piloting? So they asked for a little bit more time, another month, and they were going to farm it out to all their counterparts to have everybody just really look at, if you are centralized on, you teach government, really looking at the alignment piece because they just weren't sure that it met all the standards in comparison to what they currently have. But definitely feeling like they need something updated. So at this point, K8 would like to have me just the next, like next year, just get more samples and then as samples come through, if they feel like there's anything that's robust and good, that then we talk to the board and ask to move on with an adoption, but to table the adoption for them as of right now. High school would like to continue reviewing the books and then we're going to meet again next month and decide if they're going to move forward with the pilot at that point, if the board's good with that. So they're just not super impressed with all the materials. Or the materials, like parts of them are really good, but then it's not meeting all their standards. And so that's the, that's the concern, so.
So what I hear you telling us is that for K through eight, you are not going to move forward.
That's what they're requesting. But high school we will keep. We're not even at the pilot point. They want to just keep reviewing. They want more time, so.
That's what they need, that's what they need.
I just appreciate that they're all willing to be so thorough in the process and they didn't want to just jump on something. And so they spent a lot of time just pulling out the material and with their standards. And so I know they definitely want something. They just want it to be the right choice. So they just want more time.
It's a lot of money to go into.
And so I just said that, you know, I would give that recommendation. One of the things that they did ask is if, if and when they choose to move forward with the pilot, that if the board is giving permission for them to teach a unit from that, since obviously it's not approved yet. So I told them that I would bring that to you of once we kind of have a sense of where they're going, then you guys can say yea or nay with the pilot piece. But the pilot includes typically what we've done is they teach a unit. So they have to fill out a rubric. So I always just say, make sure you can, you teach enough of it. Like you've given a few of the assessments, you've given like a unit assessment, you've given a formative assessment so you can speak to, answer some of the questions about differentiation, the usability, the technology pieces, those kind of things. And so I don't want them to do one less and they need to do like at least a week, if not two weeks worth. And if you're doing a couple of pilots, then two weeks of each so that you're giving it the same amount of time. So you really can give it an objective opinion. So if there's really such a thing, but so.
So we're not adopting social studies for next year?
Not for K8 at this point. So one of the things that we talked about, and I think, I can't remember who I had this conversation with. I think it was Board Chair Thompson, but I, I can't remember. But we just talked about if we didn't do this, maybe it was Lisa. If we didn't, if K8, because I knew they were kind of leaning based on last month. So we did talk a lot about probably 25, 30 minutes of just enhancing our current social studies pacing guides and really trying to looking at some vertical alignment. So if there's key things at high school, but we're starting to really scaffold that down because we haven't done an adoption in so long, just feeling like it's just kind of a little bit discombobulated. And so there were definitely people there that said they would work with me starting from high school all the way down to kindergarten so that we really have more robust social studies pacing guides. And then, you know, and then whatever, at whatever point we find a curriculum that we really like and that we're just adding into that, but we're really strengthening what we currently have and what we're covering. So. And some of the material definitely had a lot of slants in it and so they weren't comfortable with it, so.
We did talk about, because the Hillsdale curriculum is free, that if there are good supplement, because that's not a comprehensive social studies program. It is designed to be supplementary, that we could bring those supplementary pieces to. Actually, Hillsdale's already been approved by the board. So we could pull some of those supplemental pieces and link them into our instructional pacing guides to kind of bolster that.
There are definitely teachers that felt like there were parts of it that are really good. It's just not comprehensive, so it's not, I mean, it doesn't cover all their standards. So, but those are some of the things we're talking about, just strengthening what we currently have, at least for K8.
So social studies standards have changed in the last six or seven years. It used to be at kindergarten and first grade, it was really, you're learning about your family and I live in a city and my city is in a state. And then you get to third grade, it was all about your community. And so you really learn about the history of your community. Obviously, fourth grade was Idaho history, fifth grade's US history and sixth grade was South America and Canada. Was kind of how it was divided up at the elementary level and it isn't anymore. Every grade level has economics, every grade level has government, every grade level has US history. Every grade level has financial literacy, which is a very strange concept for social studies, but that's where it is. And so the struggle is finding a textbook that incorporates all of those things because they don't typically go together in one book. So that's, that's been problematic.
And one of the programs we looked at, and I mean, they were looking at some of the documents and it was like from 2016 or 17 or whatever. And so they just put a new cover on and they're just like, okay, this hasn't really been updated to even match the standards. So they just weren't, you know, they were kind of underwhelmed.
And then, and I think the issue with the standards is unlike science, math and ELA, which. which are common across all 50 states for the most part, Idaho tweaked ours so that they're, they're more specific to Idaho, but they started as the common core, I hate to say that out loud, but that's where they started. We, we didn't do that with social studies. So there is no consistency across the states with social studies standards. So when Idaho revamped theirs, they're so different, they're, we're not gonna find, we are not going to find a textbook at the elementary level.
That's what it sounds like.
That is aligned to the way our standards are.
If you looked at six or seven, I mean, where else do you look?
So this is gonna be probably a place where we, we put our instructional calendar together with the supplemental materials that we use to get us to all of those different places.
What do other districts do it?
There, some of them are using some of the programs that we looked at. Not positive feedback from some of the teachers. But, you know, they're, I mean, I think they pull the pieces that they like and then they're supplementing. And so, I mean, I, I think we're going back to, and I think trustee Quimby is the one that said this maybe a year ago of, I think we're writing our own social studies curriculum and making it robust.
There you go, Quimby.
That's right.
There you go.
So I just, you know, I mean, we really talked about, you know, if, if, you know, in eighth grade, you need to talk about, you know, presidents, so maybe we're talking about Abe Lincoln and we're talking about George Washington, whatever, you know, you can change the exile and the exposure pieces for kids, but then we have some central themes and so having high school really tell us like what, from US history, what are the things you're hitting and how do we funnel that down? So there's a little bit more alignment and there's some cohesiveness that we don't have at this point because it's been such a long time since we've done an adoption. So I, and, you know, several people were like, I'm on it, I would sign up for this, so it's definitely not gonna be me trying to do this by myself, but.
Well, the rights bodies are saving a lot of money.
I would, I would put together a much better program.
I, I feel like the teachers are really, they wanna do right by kids and right by parents and this and so they just, they weren't jumping on the let's just grab a new thing. They really want it to be quality and they just don't feel like they've found that yet, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have inventories for technology. And like the vehicle inventory.
I don't have any.
Any discussion.
Well, thank you for providing.
Just trying to bring them to you as I get my hands on them.
We have the quarterly heritage health data. Any questions or conversation on that? Student remembrance plaque and tree. When the district lost Harper, it affected a lot of our district and that was the granddaughter of one of our trustees. I recommended at that time that we do a plaque and a tree in honor of her and her impact for this district and the service that David's provided. So I'm bringing it out to the board for just, to make sure we're all in agreement with moving forward with that so that Maria can get the plaque ordered. She was working with some of the nurseries to try and see if we can get a tree donated. But when we were looking in February and March, they weren't real, jumping on the bandwagon because the crap wasn't thawed yet. But I just want everyone to be up to speed. I did talk to David a little bit about this a month or so ago. Just in doing that, that's the symbol. You're good with it?
Can I just, oh yeah, can I just ask a question? And I, I, I agree 100%, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate a little bit. Just something to think about. We don't do this for everybody, so does that send a message to other families that we don't care as much? I guess I just, I just wanna be really intentional about, I'm 100% behind supporting this, but I do wanna kind of put that out there because we've had situations where that's come up before, so just wanna make sure.
I don't know why they couldn't do it for others. I mean, we're doing it because he's a trustee.
Right.
I mean, that's why we're doing it, but I mean, if they had, I mean, I don't know why anybody in the district would not be able to do that.
We weren't allowed to.
Oh.
Prior.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that's.
Blake's thing, the memorial thing at Bedouin?
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up because we got in trouble, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I think that's a.
That's ridiculous.
I think that's a community thing and I think that's how we maintain community and I think if that happens within our school cultures or the district and somebody feels that strongly about it, I don't think they should ever be denied.
Perfect, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Plant a tree, a bush, put a plaque, I mean, I, I mean, that's, yeah, I don't think that's appropriate, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's purple.
That's what I thought, I suggested a lilac, actually, for that reason. She loved unicorns. We, they don't sell unicorns.
Maybe we can ask.
Can you put the unicorn on the plaque? There you go.
Are ye, is the board okay with Maria working with me on getting the plaque? Or do we all want me to come to the board to weigh in on?
Go for it.
Okay. Do it, do it, okay. Do you wanna help in on it or you're signed?
Oh. It's 10:33.
So you should have second.
We can do it.
We're done now.
We just have the.
Yeah, we have.
The three-year-long overdue board barbecue, I mean.
We're still trying to get done.
We can put that out the next month.
All right, no problem. We are provided with dates to remember. Does anybody have anything for, we did get one item already for future agenda. Anybody else have anything?
CFO Grantham is wondering, we have, so we have the Legislative Roadshow Monday next week and then the turnaround for the budget workshop is two days later, the 17th.
That's right.
She's very concerned about having all of the budget documents kind of put together for us to look at, to get, wrap our heads around the revenues and expenditures that we are anticipating in time to post that. So if the board is willing to maybe look at moving that a little bit out, it would be helpful to her. She doesn't wanna provide information to the board that might not.
That we have to change anyway, yeah.
Then I can give you information, it just might not be complete.
How much time would she need, Jessica?
I, given me some ideas tonight with some of the things that you've talked about that I would like to present. So if we could push it one week, I would be okay, but if we need to do it next week, that's fine too. I just, I just wouldn't be able to get everything to Maria to post Monday with the Legislative Roadshow on Monday.
What if we did it on the 30th of April, that's a Tuesday?
That would be generous and I appreciate it.
That would be.
I'm fine with that. You're good? We're waiting for the man who's very popular.
30th, Tuesday, the 30th?
Correct.
Wide open.
Oh, hey!
It was meant to be.
You're good? All right, so we'll move it to the 30th of April.
Perfect, and then just as an FYI for the board, Lynn and I both are at a training for our next regularly scheduled board meeting.
You mean the May board?
The May board meeting.
May 8th board meeting?
Yes.
Are you in training that whole day or?
Yeah, we're, we're out of town.
Okay. Well, I mean, I do think we could still hold the board meeting. What's that?
So she can zoom in?
Or be on the phone.
Yeah, that's true, to answer questions. Would Rebecca be able or Brooke, I mean, Jessica will be here.
I'll be here.
But, because you had mentioned it to me, I said we need to bring to the board, but having someone say, just occupy your space, take your notes? Okay.
And then, yeah, I can be available on the phone.
Okay.
If there are questions or any answers.
Sure, that sounds good. Anything else? No? Mr. Jones? All right, on that note, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, it's 10:37.